councillors please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Cunningham and councillor Hammond will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that councillors Cunningham and Hammond be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Are there any other apologies? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, I move that councillor Griffiths be granted a leave of absence for today's meeting.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk, that councillor Griffiths be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention an item in today's agenda, a motion of condolence for former Alderman Ian Brasasco. Lord Mayor, can I invite you to move that, please?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that this council extends its sincerest and deepest sympathies to the family and friends of the late Ian Brasasco A O A M, and pays tribute to him for his dedicated service to the city and the people of Brisbane.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by councillor Cassidy, that the resolution as printed is moved. Lord Mayor, do you have any comments, please?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr Chair. As the motion says, today, we are with sadness paying tribute to someone who has served our city and our community well, and someone who was elected as a councillor in this place and served for a significant period of time in the service of the people of Brisbane, but also achieved many other things as well for the community and for sport in particular. Ian Brasasco sadly passed away last week at age 92. Before becoming an Alderman, as it was previously known, in 1971 for the Australian Labor Party, Ian was a pharmacist and ran pharmacies in New Farm, Banyo, and also the Queen Street Mall. In 1971, Ian was elected to council in a by-election for the seat of Nunda, following the death of Alderman J J Carey. In 1973, he shifted to the newly created seat of Tomball. He lost his seat in 1975 before returning to council in 1979 in the seat of Lutwich, and then later moved to the seat of Springwood. I think there was quite a few different wards represented there, which was a challenge in itself. During his tenure, he was Chair of the Health Committee and later the Planning and Building Committee. So he was a committee chair. Ian also made a significant contribution to the community in Brisbane, including serving as the President of the Australian Soccer Federation, as Chair of WorkCover Queensland, and he also served on the board of the Queensland Academy of Sport. Ian was made a member of the General Division of the Order of Australia in 1988 in recognition of his service to the sport of soccer, or as others would say, football. Following his council years, Ian was the co-founder of the Queensland branch of Food Bank in 1993, and served as its chairman and a director before finally stepping down in 2016. And we all know the great and fantastic work that Food Bank has done for our community, helping those in need with the issue of food scarcity. I note that Ian has stated that Food Bank had given him his greatest satisfaction in public life and is his proudest achievement, and rightly so. On behalf of my team, I want to put on the record our thanks for his contribution to the people of Brisbane and helping to contribute to what our city is today. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Some of this might sound familiar. Ian Brasasco was born and bred Queenslander, the product of hardworking Italian migrants. His mother and father were part of the rapid influx of Italians into Australia in the 1920s, with his father having been a political prisoner under Mussolini. And like many Italian migrants, they headed for the cane fields of North Queensland for a new life. Ian was born up there soon after, in 1928. After spending the first few years of his life in and around Ingham, Ian ended up down in Brisbane and enrolled into Nudgee College. He was a keen rugby player, but after a bout of illness, he had to forego his union career, instead trying his hand at pharmacy. That was the thing about Ian was anything he tried, he did bloody well, and there were no half-measures. Ian met his wife Patsy in his pharmacy years, who helped him run their fast-growing collection of stores right across Brisbane. He was a very successful businessman, but Ian wanted more. He wanted to be part of change, and in 1960, he joined the Australian Labor Party. He ran for state elections in the 1960s and 1970s with no success, but that didn't deter him. After some encouragement from Brisbane's then-Lord Mayor, Clem Jones, Ian ran for the ALP in the Brisbane City Council in 1971. He was an Alderman for 14 years in total, representing the residents of the Tomball, Lutwich, and Spring Hill wards. He chaired the Health Committee and Planning Committees in this time. Ian's campaign manager in 1985 passed on a few words. "I was Ian's campaign manager in the 1985 campaign when he ran for what was called the Ward of Spring Hill, which stretched from the city centre all the way up to Alderley." Ian delegated the job of getting his posters printed and ready for putting up around the electorate. "I don't know what I was thinking, but I thought I would save money by getting the posters printed on paper instead of corflute." Ian was not impressed. "So you want to be a politician, do you? You've got a lot to learn, boy," he said. Three years later, I succeeded him as the Alderman for Spring Hill after a very close fought election, and he offered advice. "Whatever you do in local government, there's bound to be someone who doesn't like it and will criticise. It's so much easier to make no noise and do nothing." While Ian might have dispensed this advice, he never took it. It was often said of him that he was the greatest Lord Mayor Brisbane never had. That was David Hinchcliffe, of course. Ian was also instrumental in the Labor Party's financial management in Queensland, and was awarded a Life Membership of the ALP in recognition of his numerous contributions. Ian was also big on sport, pushing for Brisbane to have world-class sporting facilities and to host the 1982 Commonwealth Games. Football was his greatest passion. He devoted years of his life to the game as President of the Australian and Queensland Soccer Federations. He was in charge of the Brisbane Strikers in 1997, when the team won the National Soccer League Grand Final. In recognition of his service to soccer, Ian was appointed as a Member of the Order of Australia in 1988. He was also an inaugural Member of the Queensland Academy of Sport, which nurtured the talent of Grant Hackett, Susie O'Neil, and Sam Stowza, to mention a few. Outside of sports, politics, and pharmacy, Ian was also the Chair of the Gladstone Ports Corporation and the Port of Brisbane Corporation, and a board member of the Queensland Investment Corporation and their Bio Capital Funds Board as well. As Chair of WorkCover Queensland for more than a decade, we have Ian to thank for the great work that organisation does today, protecting the rights and interests of workers right across this state. In 2001, he was awarded a Centenary Medal for his distinguished services to business and commerce. Ian was a man of charity too. Arguably, one of his greatest achievements was founding Food Bank Queensland alongside Clem Jones, a charity which now feeds a quarter of a million people every single month. Ian Brasasco positively impacted so many people's lives in so many ways in his 92 years. He was a generous man with a big labor heart. He loved sport. He was one of the old school, a true gentleman and a true leader. On behalf of the Labor team here in City Hall, we extend our thoughts and condolences to Ian's wife Patsy, his family and friends. He'll forever be remembered and cherished as one of Queensland's greats.
Further speakers? There being no further speakers, Lord Mayor. I now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,647th meeting, held on Tuesday 11 May 2021, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,647th meeting of council held on the 11th of May 2021 be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant today, Mr Joseph Wallace, who will address the chamber on Multana Property Services. Mr Wallace. Welcome, Mr Wallace. You have five minutes. You're welcome to stand or sit, whichever is your preference, and your time begins when you begin.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land which we meet today, the Yagura and the Terrostrata Island people, and pay my respects to elders past, present, and emerging. My name is Joseph Wallace. I'm the Managing Director of Multana Property Services. I'm a proud Aboriginal man from the durable rainforest and far north Queensland, and the Duro Aboriginal descendants in Bowen, North Queensland. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce Multana to you all today. Some of you already know Multana well. For those who don't, Multana was founded to create sustainable economic outcomes for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We do this by providing long-term, sustainable employment opportunities with our cleaning, landscaping, and building services. Multana has contracts with Queensland Government, Brisbane City Council, and private businesses. We provide services to major projects such as the Cross River Rail Project, Metro South Health, and the Department of Transport and Main Roads Bruce Highway Upgrade. At present, we have 181 employees. Thirty-one per cent of these employees identify as Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander. And according to Max Employment, who help us recruit staff, we are industry-leading with our employment of First Nations people. The word 'Multana' means coming together to help each other in the Kalkadun language, which is exactly what we're doing through our relationship with the Brisbane City Council. Together, we are addressing the National Closer Gap Initiative and accelerating improvements in outcomes for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. In March 2020, the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, we were engaged to sanitise the fleet of Brisbane public buses to help fight the spread of coronavirus. We hired over 70 staff within 48 hours, the majority of whom have lost their jobs due to COVID. I remember seeing lineups of people at Centrelink and Jobseek offices. Those lines were out the door. Multana had to line up too. Our new cleaners for the Brisbane City buses, they were lining up to get their PP and start work. Many of these employees are still working with Multana today. Some have been promoted to site supervisors and managers, and others are currently undertaking traineeships to further their career development. In December last year, Multana was successful in extending the Brisbane City Council bus sanitisation contract, enabling us to maintain employment of those 70 staff members. Ahead of National Reconciliation Week, Multana is promoting the work we do to support employment and training of our mob, including featuring many of these individuals on our website and newsletter. It's important for us to show the human side of what our company and the contracts we manage mean. I want to acknowledge the Brisbane City Council for its continued commitment to the reconciliation and healing process. The theme of National Reconciliation Week this year is more than a word. Reconciliations takes action. Brisbane City Council is certainly taking action, and for that, on behalf of Multana Property Services, I would like to thank you for the opportunities you have provided us. Also, I want to thank my business partners, Mark Hearn and Damien Ken, for supporting Multana in its foundation and ongoing success, and recognising the strength in Aboriginal leadership for Aboriginal people. It has been a long journey of learning for both myself and my capable partners, but I'm thankful to them for encouraging me to grow as a business owner and become the leader I am today. In turn, Mark and Damien have learnt from our business model, and in particular, the benefits of Indigenous employment and the knock-on effects this has for the wider community. By partnering with experienced business, Multana is able to facilitate rapid growth, but importantly, build our capability through established IP around safety, quality insurance, business planning, and structure, all of which take significant time to establish for a new business. This model works for us because it has allowed us to employ more First Nations people, but also prove to our work clients that we can deliver high-quality professional services. Indeed, the council, we started out with a small contract, cleaning community halls and admin buildings, and now, in addition, the halls, we're on our second 12-month contract of nightly bus cleaning across seven depots. In closing, I'd like to thank you for your time today in supporting Indigenous employment while giving a small Aboriginal business the chance to prove our capability professional businesses we are. Please continue to consider Multana and other Indigenous businesses for projects across Brisbane. Together, we are building better outcomes for all communities.
Thank you, Mr Wallace. Please feel free to take a seat. Just someone behind you, and can I call on councillor Marks? Councillor Murphy? Councillor Murphy to respond, please.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you so much, Joey, for taking the time to come in and address council today. Chair, as we all heard, Multana's story is absolutely inspiring, and the organisation itself is changing the lives of many Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people for the better. Transport for Brisbane is very proud of its partnership with your team, Joey, and we're very pleased to continue supporting Multana and its operations. We met Joey in March this year, when I went out to the Garden City Depot in the evening to see firsthand the brilliant work that Multana is doing to keep our buses clean and sanitised, as Brisbane continues to grapple with the impact of COVID-19 on our fleet. I was also joined by the Acting Manager of Transport Operations, Luke Cruz. Joey gave some history on Multana in his speech today, but what I'd like to emphasise to councillors is the experience that Joey brings to the organisation. Now, before co-founding Multana Property Services in 2017, Joey had already been making a difference to Queensland's Indigenous communities for over 25 years. He has extensive experience working in the Commonwealth and Queensland Government Departments, Indigenous organisations, and now the private sector. As Managing Director of Multana, his professional qualifications, his knowledge, and his personal experience of Indigenous issues is driving the organisation to make a real impact in the lives of everyday Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. As Joey mentioned, Multana was born out of a partnership between Joey and Mark John and Damien Ken of the CMBM Facility Services. Mark and Damien's strong footprint in the building and maintenance facility services industry, along with Joey's expertise in Indigenous employment and reconciliation, has proven to be a perfect combination, I think we could say, Joey. As we heard, Multana is an Indigenous-owned business whose purpose is to create training and employment opportunities for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in the Queensland landscaping, construction, building, maintenance, and cleaning industry. They're delivering their commercial cleaning, landscaping, and maintenance services right across South East Queensland. But what Joey highlighted, and what's even more important, is the fact that they're providing Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Australians with sustainable economic outcomes through the provision of employment and training services. Multana is now going from strength to strength with significant growth in their workforce, and it's fantastic to hear that just last year, Multana had only 12 employees and is now employing over 180, in no small part, councillors, due to the bus sanitising contract that Multana have with council. Now, this growth says a lot about their work culture, and it's clear that more and more clients will be keen to get involved with Multana, and of course, that includes Brisbane City Council. As a result of COVID-19, many parts of council services have been challenged, and we've needed to adapt and to re-evaluate our operations to be able to support the community during the pandemic. And for Transport for Brisbane, the challenge has been ensuring public confidence in public transport. We know that due to concerns that people have shared with spread of the virus, people have showed a greater reluctance to hopping on trains, buses, and ferries. And Transport for Brisbane is doing everything we can to protect the community and our bus operators during the public health crisis, and this includes regular sanitisation of our fleet, which Multana provide. As Joe explained, Multana was one of the organisations that we engaged to complete sanitisation work on our buses through most of 2020. Multana's work with council started as an emergency contract that ran between the 18th of March 2020 all the way through to the 31st of January 2021. By the end of January 2021, we needed the vital sanitisation services to continue operations, so Transport for Brisbane went out to market to tender for this work following conclusion of the emergency contract. Over 30 companies competed for this tender, so enormously competitive tender, and after careful evaluation, the tender was awarded once again to Multana Property Services. New contract with Multana commenced on the 21st of December 2020, and speaking to Joey and his new team, I know that they very much recognise the importance of the work, and we're glad that they are helping to keep Brisbane's community safe. This is a partnership that Team Shrinna is especially excited to be supporting because Multana is a local-based company with local employees, and council's contract is now providing Joey's team with at least 65 jobs over the next 12 months, which means 65 jobs for people here in Brisbane. As Multana aims to support those who come from particularly challenging and lower socio-economic backgrounds, the contract is also giving people a chance who previously struggled with establishing themselves in the workforce. Some of the employees that I met and that I spoke to have previously struggled for years to find work, and they have battled significant issues such as domestic violence and substance abuse. It would have been very hard, Joey, I think we would all agree, for them to find work in this job market, particularly those who've been made unemployed due to the pandemic itself, but due to the hand-up that Multana and Brisbane City Council have been able to provide working together, they are much better off for it. It's the Lord Mayor's local buy policy that's supporting partnerships like these, providing investment into Brisbane companies and industry. It's a fantastic example of the private sector working together with the public sector. We've been able to achieve a great outcome and create jobs to change lives, and importantly, to keep people safe. As Joey said, Chair, Multana means coming together to help each other in the Kalkadun language, and Joey, this is truly what Multana has done with Brisbane City Council. So thank you for coming in today. We appreciate the time that you've taken to address all councillors, and we certainly look forward to continuing the work that we are doing together to clean our buses and keep our communities safe. So thank you again, Joey.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Wallace. Mr Peers will look after you. Thank you. Councillors, now begins question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Mackay.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week's federal budget had some significant announcements for Brisbane, including infrastructure funding if we are successful in our 2032 Olympics and Paralympics bid. Can you outline how this funding from the Morrison government will contribute to our city?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mackay, for the question. And it was interesting last week to see the federal budget handed down. And before I move into budget implications and budget initiatives, I just wanted to say, I think by any measure, if you look around the world, you would rather be here in Australia than anywhere else. And that's a credit to the federal government, it's also a credit to the state governments right across Queensland. All three levels of government have really worked together well to deal with this pandemic. And it's also not made easier by the fact that we have a federation. And, you know, there are many countries with fewer levels of government, there are many countries with more simplified levels of government, but to be in this position that we're in is a credit to all three levels of government, but also particularly a credit to the leadership of the federal government in bringing together all the state governments and territories in that national cabinet environment. So I just want to pay tribute to everyone that's been involved in the COVID response, because we're seeing now Australia bouncing back faster than almost any other country of a comparable nature. And that is a good thing, because the impacts of the pandemic were significant, but together, working together, and by the leadership provided by the Prime Minister, we're all stronger as a result of it. In particular, the last federal budget, sorry, the federal budget last week had some exciting news in it for Brisbane and indeed South East Queensland, and that is a commitment to match the verbal commitment we had seen recently from the federal government to help fund infrastructure that will support the growth of the region, and in particular, that will help also accommodate a potential 2032 Olympic Games here in South East Queensland. Now, the Premier asked the Prime Minister to put that 50/50 support in place, and the Prime Minister was forthcoming with that commitment. And there has been almost $6 billion set aside in the federal budget, in the forwards, to help deliver better infrastructure. Now, that is exactly why the South East Queensland Council of Mayors went down this path in the first place. We started the journey because we knew that this would be one way of ensuring that the focus of the nation is on our growing region. We are the fastest-growing region in Australia, South East Queensland. That comes with challenges, but it also provides opportunities. And one of the biggest opportunities that we have is the 2032 Olympic Games and the opportunity to potentially host that here. And so that funding of around $6 billion is a very exciting opportunity for our region, and I look forward to working with the other two levels of government to see that that will be invested in the projects that will make the difference to our growing region and help facilitate a better, brighter, and more sustainable future. The budget also includes a much-needed investment of $2.1 billion in targeted support for tourism and the arts to revitalise two sectors that have probably been hit amongst the worst out of all the sectors of the economy. And I know that Brisbane will benefit from this funding. For our young residents, an increase in training places will help apprentices and trainees boost their skills, and also tradies will be able to ride off the cost of new machinery and equipment through till June 2023. We know that we're at the point now where, because international migration has stopped, and because the economy is bouncing back strongly in many sectors, that some sectors, believe it or not, are experiencing a skill shortage, a shortage of workers. We're hearing stories now from across the economy of sectors that simply cannot find enough workers to fill the jobs that they have available. Now, we know that there's other sectors that are still continuing to struggle. Hospitality, the arts, and entertainment are amongst those, but it's quite fascinating to see the change in a short period of time where we're seeing thousands of people out of work, and now we have jobs that are going unfilled in certain industries. So the federal government knows that a big part of that will be investing in skilling our workers, in training, in making sure we fill those shortage positions by upskilling workers across the community. We also know that the federal budget will continue to invest in important infrastructure projects here in Brisbane, and whether it's the Indrapilly Roundabout Upgrade, which I'm looking forward to kicking off, the Better Roads for Brisbane Programme, which includes...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. In the E N C report today, there are changes to the advertising device's local law. One such change is the requirement to give an example of community benefit for an advertising device. The Lord Mayor spends $5.2 million on the Living in Brisbane newsletter. On each and every one, there is a photo of the Lord Mayor front and centre. The Lord Mayor is shamelessly hijacking official council publications to promote himself. So my question, Lord Mayor, can you explain to me how having your photo on the front of every Living in Brisbane newsletter benefits our community?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Cassidy. Through you, Mr Chair. I think you would simply say that the same logic would be used when it comes to explaining to the people of Brisbane what you're doing to represent them, what you're doing to build a better Brisbane, that you would use when you plaster, Mr Chair, your photo over every local newsletter and publication that you produce from your office. And so what we're really seeing here, Mr Chair, is a politically motivated question, which really, let me break it down for you, is about not wanting, not wanting me as leader of this city to be associated with any of the good things that are happening in this city. That's exactly what councillor Cassidy wants. He would like people to think that this third-party organisation, this, you know, faceless government bureaucracy is providing all of the great things that happen, and that the leader of the city has nothing to do with that. He would like the people of Brisbane to be kept into the dark about what we are doing on their behalf to build a better Brisbane. I think that's just wrong. I think that's wrong, because you could be sure that he wouldn't say the same thing when the Premier talks about... when the Premier talks about the initiatives that she is leading. It's interesting to see member after member at the state government level saying the Palashay government does this or the Palashay government does that. They never say the state government, it's the Palashay government because they are apparently responsible for every good thing that happens in the Queensland government. And you see, do you see councillor Cassidy railing against that? No, he's the first one to say the Palashay government is doing these things. So, look, it's very cynical and transparent what you are doing, councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair. You just don't want anyone to know about the great things that the Shriner Council is doing for the people of Brisbane. The Shriner Council continues to deliver great things for the people of Brisbane and-
No, no more interjections. Lord Mayor.
And the opposition leader would like to have one rule for himself, Mr Chair, where this goes out across his local area with how many photos? One, two, three, four, hang on a second, four, five, six, seven, seven photos of himself. I can tell you, Living in Brisbane is a conservative publication and conspiracy. There's only one photo of the leader of the city, yet seven photos. Shameless self-promotion from the local councillor for Deegan Ward here. I think all you need to do to see what is going on here is look at Exhibit A, which is just sheer hypocrisy, sheer hypocrisy. But we will continue to tell the people of Brisbane what this council is doing for them and what the leadership of this council is doing for them. Because we believe that when we promise to do something, that we will deliver. And whether it's building new green bridges, upgrading Victoria Park and transforming Victoria Park, delivering the Brisbane Metro, road upgrades right across the suburbs of Brisbane, or delivering better suburbs in a thousand different ways, through better parks, better footpaths, better roads, better libraries and all the range of things that we support. Of course, we're going to tell people what we're doing because they deserve to know. They deserve to know. And I really think it's an interesting perspective that according to the leader of the opposition or the so-called leader of the opposition, that the leader of a city is not allowed to communicate with the residents of that city when he communicates and puts seven photos of himself in a newsletter. So we can see what's going on here. It's very transparent. But we know what you're up to councillor Cassidy and the residents of Brisbane also know what you're up to.
Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the Shriner Council has a history of delivering infrastructure for the growing suburbs of our city. Can you update the chamber on the latest way in which we are ensuring the infrastructure in our suburbs are keeping pace with this development?
Councillor Adams.
Thank you councillor Atwood for the question. And I'm very pleased to advise the chamber that we have been working hard on updating the infrastructure needs of our growing city. And we will next week in this place see an update to the local government infrastructure plan. So as many councillors would be aware, the local government infrastructure plan, or commonly known as the L G I P, is a principal document which helps guide the growth of the city. Long gone are the days where it was considered a strategic document only. The L G I P is actually a delivery focused blueprint which helps facilitate the infrastructure that Brisbane residents expect and need. It's all about making sure that the communities that are growing have enough parkland. The communities that are growing have adequate stormwater and their roads and footpaths are up to scratch. The team in council track the growth of all 190 Brisbane suburbs and allocate the required projects accordingly. It's about making sure that the L G I P priorities align with the high growth areas. The L G I P is a 10-year, $2.1 billion commitment which makes sure Brisbane keeps up with the pace of its natural growth. We know, the state government have told us that we need to accommodate 386,000 new residents by 2041, which equates to 188,000 new dwellings. And as a part of approval for these new dwellings, council has the ability to levy infrastructure charges from new developments. If we want to collect these infrastructure charges, we need the L G I P and vice versa because we can't collect it unless it's in the L G I P. They work hand in hand. So council's capital works programme is reflected in the L G I P. It is necessary that local governments spend charges revenue on projects that are of citywide importance and are of a scale that equate to a major project. That is why things you will see in next week's L G I P is two new green bridges at Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek. It will include the Victoria Park project as well as the new Howard Smith Wools Ferry Terminal. Next Tuesday, councillors can expect to see an increase in park projects from 160 to 173. Creating new parkland is crucial for a growing city like ours and we are planning accordingly. There'll be an increase in stormwater projects and an increase in projects for our pathways and bikeways.
No interjections please, the Deputy Mayor.
The amended L G I P will have a total investment of $2.1 billion. Brisbane is currently the nation's fastest growing city. People are coming here in droves to raise a family and begin new work. They envy our weather, our lifestyle and how well functioning our city is because of Team Shriner's council. High growth areas like Polara and Rochedale will see significant investment to help support the new communities being built there. There is Polari in particular, a budget of nearly $28 million, 106% increase on its previous number. But that is what the L G I P is about, making sure that Brisbane's new high growth areas are being properly serviced. As a part of this amendment process, the L G I P was required to go through Queensland government approval processes and they have told us that the amendments are acceptable and supported, hence we will see them next week. But we must remember, this plan is regularly updated and, like all previous L G I Ps, is based on the most recent growth experiences and recognise modelling and methodology. This new L G I P has many new projects from when the last one came through five years ago. But there will be some suburbs that just did not realise the growth predicted five years ago and they may see a reduction in specific projects. This is a continually changing plan and next week's update reflects the continual changes we've seen in growth across the city. From the 1st of January 2020, all Queensland councils are required to report on infrastructure charges and that requirement gives them greater assurance that we are doing the development in their area and we are providing the infrastructure that is needed as well. Projects brought forward in this L G I P include the Witten Barracks, the Howard Smith Wools Ferry Terminal and the proposed Nudgee Recreation Reserve. Once they go through council next week, they will go through public consultation and then proceed to formal adoption. This amendment is all about the part of Shriner Council administration's commitment to making sure the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, each year you're given an extra $100,000 as an allowance on top of your salary. This allowance is supposedly given to you to pay for extra expenses that might come with the job. The problem is what you spend your allowance on is not audited or publicly published. It's an allowance paid for by ratepayers, but residents have no idea if you're using it for work or personal expenses. Lord Mayor, in the spirit of integrity and transparency, what have you spent your allowance on over the last 12 months?
The Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I feel like I've been transported in a time machine back to before the local government election last year, which Labour spent $2.1 million losing. Now, this particular bogus argument has been prosecuted again and again by the Labour Party. It's been pumped into people's lounge rooms and cars and on their TV sets in a $2.1 million unsuccessful campaign. When will you let it go councillor Cassidy? And, you know, I noticed that you haven't let your allowance go. I noticed that that hasn't happened because we saw a one-off stunt where he wanted to hand back, yeah, a little bit of cash. But I really wonder why you would raise an issue when it's been completely discredited. I really wonder why you would raise an issue with an allowance which Labour introduced. Which Labour introduced. Not me, not me, not Graham Quirk, not Campbell Newman. But at the very least, it was Jim Sawley. But it was probably before that, there was previous allowances by other Labour Lord Mayors. So apparently, apparently according to Labour, Mr Sawley was the best Lord Mayor Brisbane ever had, that's their quote. And we know how that, we know how that campaign went where Mr Sawley was elected promising to reduce the Lord Merrill salary. And shortly after he was elected, he reduced the salary and increased the allowance. That is history. That is exactly what happened. And yet Labour has the hide to stand up and criticise what they introduced, the system that they introduced. When they're back to prosecuting a failed election campaign from more than 12 months ago, you know that they have no idea on how to run Australia's largest council. They are all out of ideas, they have nothing positive to contribute and all they can do is try and throw a bit of dirt. Well, you've tried that and guess what? The people of Brisbane heard what you were saying and they rejected it because it's all about negativity. It's not about the future of the city. It's not about what will you do if you're on this side of the chamber to build a better Brisbane? We know what Labour's against and they're pretty much against anything that we support because they literally take the term of opposition literally. But we don't know what they're for. There are, I made a mistake last week. I actually said there are five Labour councils and five different opinions. I was wrong. There are five Labour councils and six different opinions, Mr Chair. Because they cannot even settle on their own policy positions. They can't even work out who their real leader is. Changes from week to week and they go back to, in question time, asking a question that related to an election campaign more than 12 months ago. I think it says everything you need to know about the people on the other side of the chamber.
Further questions? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor McLaughlin. Councillor McLaughlin, last week's federal budget had some significant announcements for Brisbane, including additional funding for the local roads and community infrastructure programme. Can you outline how this funding from the Morrison government will contribute to our city?
Councillor McLaughlin.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Hutton for the question. The federal government is continuing to provide support to councils to help boost Australia's economy. Last week, we all went home to listen to the delivery of the federal budget. Amongst the announcements designed to help keep our economy strong was the announcement of Phase Three of the Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme. The federal government knows well that to create much needed growth and stimulus here in Brisbane and in the wider community, to provide the benefits of ongoing employment and support for local economies, give the money to councils. That's what they know and do. The third phase of the L R C I funding follows the half a billion dollars provided in the first phase of the L R C I, Local Roads Community Infrastructure, announced in May 2020, in which council secured $11.7 million. This is now funding 24 job creating projects. We secured $40.7 million in funding in the L R C I Two, announced in October 2020. And this is assisting, Mr Chair, the Shriner Council administration to deliver 41 job creating projects across the city. Now, the latest phase of the Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme, Phase Three, was announced in the budget for $1 billion last Tuesday for projects to be undertaken between January 2020 and June 2023. How much comes to Brisbane City Council in this round has not yet been announced, but we are grateful for the continued support of the Australian government through this programme in which in total will span across three years, injecting money into Brisbane's community with $52.7 million so far under L R C I Phases One and Two, in total 65 job creating projects. For the information of the chamber, the Queensland Treasury Guidelines from the Economic Strategy Division's formula says the number of directly employed jobs per $1 million of stimulus is 3.2 full-time equivalent employees. That is, for every million dollars, 3.2 jobs are created. Mr Chair, council is excited to continue working with the Australian government and its further contribution under L R C I Phase Three. Rest assured, we do have projects ready to go. The large number and diversity of projects currently underway means that there is an equally diverse number of contractors engaged and employed to ensure that spending is felt far and wide through our local economy. The diversity of contractors engaged by council is quite varied. For example, trades employed include asbestos removal, electrical contractors, roofers, including those working on the heritage listed Hangar Seven, road resurfacing, internal fit outs, skate BMX track specialists, fencing and AV specialists, to name just a few. We are well underway in the project delivery of Phases One and Two of the L R C I projects. When the government announces the amount that council is to receive in Phase Three, we'll have the opportunity to extend the stimulus into a wider segment of local suppliers and contractors. In the meantime, Mr Chair, we're also getting on with the job of utilizing the state government's South East Queensland Community Stimulus Programme funding. I talked about that here in recent weeks, week before last. Projects like the upgrade at the Murray Re Recreation Reserve, works at the Everton Park Bowls Club hub, sports field lighting, improvements at the Willong Animal Rehoming Facility and the Morning Side S E S depot, works to name a few. We are waiting to hear if the state will also support us in the delivery of important projects like the Indrapilly Riverwalk Bike Way to connect the Western Freeway Bike Way to the Indrapilly Riverwalk, the Prebble Street to Wishart Bike Way and the Pinkham Bar Access Road improvements. Mr Chair, council looks forward to working with the Australian government on nominations for this latest phase of economic stimulus to help us all recover from the COVID-19 pandemic and trust that the state government will see the good economic sense in continuing to support, continuing its support for our projects through the S E Q Community Stimulus Programme. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the Mayor. Lord Mayor, you've said in the past that you're very supportive of increasing tree canopy cover in the city, particularly in busy areas with high pedestrian volumes. But we've recently received confirmation from council arborists that there are no more appropriate locations for street plantings left in the Gabba Ward. The arborists say there are currently no new planting opportunities within the suburbs of my ward. Among other rules, council policies dictate that new street trees can't be planted within 10 metres of a street corner, three metres of a driveway or power pole, seven metres of street light, et cetera. I understand and I'm not disputing the need for some of those rules, but unfortunately this leaves very little room for new street trees. Every time a tree is removed for a new driveway or a power pole relocation or an intersection widening or to facilitate a new development, council is supposed to plant a replacement tree in the surrounding area. But the arborists tell me there's now no room left in the inner south side. So they're collecting money for offset planting, but they don't actually have many places to spend it. So my question is, what will you do to create more room for street tree plantings in the inner city? And do you agree that if council arborists say there's no more room for offset planting, council should stop private developers from removing any further street trees until the problem is rectified?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sri for the question and through you, Mr Chair. Councillor Cassidy, that's a real question. That's actually a question about something of interest to the people of Brisbane, not a recycling of a former failed election strategy. Now, what I will say though is I do not know and I haven't verified what council arborists have told councillor Sri. So that's obviously something I'll have to confirm. So this is the first that I've heard about that claim being made. What I do also know is that we invest a significant amount each year into planting new street trees. And we have a target of more than 10,000 street trees to be planted a year across the city. And in the past, we've also, we've also been very proud of our 2 Million Trees Programme where we planted 2 million trees across Brisbane in a four-year period, which is just an incredible achievement. And it actually gives me great pride to actually visit some of those planting sites after a significant amount of time has passed and see how they progressed. There are a few that I visit on a regular basis and it is just amazing. It's, you know, there's the, I think it might be an old Chinese saying about when the best time to plant a tree was. Yeah, the best time to plant a tree is yesterday or 20 years ago. The next best time is now. And that is why we do invest significantly in our tree planting programmes and our maintenance of trees. When it comes to specifically the Gabba Ward, certainly happy to have- When it comes to specifically the Gabba Ward, certainly happy to have a look at what advice might have been provided to councillor Shree. And certainly happy to work with councillor Shree and the council team out there to make sure that we can plant as many trees as possible in your ward. Because I think we actually want the same thing there. And so I'll have a look at that. I know that there's more than 400,000 street trees across Brisbane and we're...
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to councillor Shree.
Just cautious about the relevance because that specific part of the question was, should we stop private developers removing street trees if there's not room? Haven't really had an answer to that.
Thank you councillor Shree. There was a lot to the question. There was a number of limbs to it. The Lord Mayor is different. That was accidental, but you know, don't go too far out on a branch here. I'll leaf it to you. In all seriousness, Lord Mayor, please address the question that was presented to you.
Yes, no, no, thank you. Certainly happy to have a look at those matters. Look, I know that it can be a very onerous process for someone wanting to remove a street tree. It's not, it's certainly not an easy process. It is certainly not something that gets rubber stamped. We get a lot of complaints from a lot of people about the lengths that they have to go to to justify any kind of removal of a tree. That's certainly been my experience and the feedback that I've received. And so we know that, we know that there are other entities that have the ability to do basically what they want with street trees. And it's been mentioned, one of those has been mentioned in the chamber by another councillor just now. But look, we take our tree cover very seriously. We're committed to growing that tree cover. And certainly happy to have a look at the issues that have been raised by councillor Shree in the Gabba Ward in particular, to see if there's a different way that can be, that we can approach this situation to ensure that the Gabba Ward, like the rest of Brisbane, is more livable going forward.
Further questions? councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, last week's federal budget had some significant announcements for Brisbane, including $262 million in targeted support for industry's hardest hit by COVID-19. Can you outline how this funding from the Morrison government will contribute to our city?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Chair. And through you, thanks councillor Landers for the question. So like every city in Australia, Brisbane's economy has been significantly impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. Local businesses, from manufacturers to family-owned cafes and entertainers, have struggled through multiple lockdowns and economic uncertainty. As we continue our economic recovery, it's important that all three levels of government work together to help our local businesses and get business, Brisbane residents back to work. Last week's federal budget delivered significant investment for our local economy, providing millions in funding to help create jobs, while delivering several major initiatives for the greater Brisbane area. One of the industries impacted most by coronavirus was the entertainment industry, Mr Chair, and this has been something of concern for both myself and the Lord Mayor. We know how important our entertainment industry is to Brisbane. And the Shrinna Council and the Morrison government have a proven history of supporting Brisbane's arts and entertainment industry. Not only does the arts and entertainment sector provide employment and economic opportunities for Brisbane, but is also an important way to promote our local culture, community, and the arts. The Morrison government's economic recovery plan and budget will deliver millions of dollars of support for Brisbane's artists and event organizers, our live music industry, and the hundreds of small businesses that support it. With over $262 million to support industry's hardest hit during the pandemic, this budget will help regrow our economy and get Australia back on track. Trevor Evans, the member for Brisbane, the federal member for Brisbane, has worked hard to secure millions in funding for Brisbane artists and venues through the Morrison government's Restart Investment to Sustain and Expand Fund, also known as RISE. Over the past year, the Morrison government has delivered more than $5.5 million in funding to local Brisbane-based artists and production companies, including more than $1.3 million to Circa, Brisbane's homegrown contemporary circus company, to deliver Shaun the Sheep's Circa show. Le Boite was awarded almost $1 million to employ 22 artists across 18 months. And I know that councillor Mattick enjoyed the opportunity to visit Le Boite's new program, made possible by the funding from the Morrison government. Black Dance received more than $600,000 to deliver Black Form II, an incredible digital showcase for emerging and mid-career artists. We all know that the Fortitude Music Hall has been struggling to stay afloat. So it was great to see a $260,000 lifeline from the Morrison government to keep them going last year with a series of events with the Brisbane Symphony Orchestra. Play Lab Theatre was awarded almost $400,000. And Brisbane's favorite new festival, Win and Fringe, was awarded more than $230,000 to deliver an even bigger program this year. Brisbane's Deep Blue Orchestra was awarded $77,000 to deliver their orchestral installation of Song to the Earth, and Outer Space was awarded $174,000. The Morrison government's support to our arts sector has been absolutely incredible, Mr Chair, and I'm pleased to advise that Brisbane has once again come out on top in the latest round of RISE funding, with a further $2 million in funding announced to local venues and arts companies based in Brisbane, including more than $198,000 to support the Brisbane Writers Festival and their work to develop a bigger and better program than ever before in 2022. This will deliver a new hybrid model to give even more people the opportunity to take part in Australia's Best Writers Festival with both in-person events, new partners, venues, content, and programming. The vital funding will support more than 200 local Brisbane jobs and reach an audience of more than 23,000 people. Scott Morrison has delivered more than $750,000 to support Brisbane-based Australasian Dance Collective to deliver a drone and dance show choreographed with human movement patterns to challenge our perceptions of artificial intelligence. A documentary by Hoodlum will unveil the world of dance, drones, research, and what it means to be human in increasingly digitized and AI-saturated environment. Scott Morrison has also delivered $180,000 in funding to support this year's Big Sound Festival, Australia's largest new music showcase and music conference, featuring Australian artists, putting them within arms' reach of decision-makers, new audiences, and opening global digital doors for Brisbane. Together with Morrison government, the Shrinna Council remains committed to supporting Brisbane's arts and live music industry.
Further questions? councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week in committee meetings, your Public and Active Transport Chair, councillor Murphy, said that council will be conducting market research and polling to review the future of ferry services in our city. He also said terminals with low or no growth won't be upgraded. The announcement of this review was made in passing during a committee meeting, and we all know what LMP reviews mean, more cuts to public transport. Lord Mayor, you've already cut multiple ferry services, including the Norman Park Terminal and ferry, without any consultation with local residents. Now, it appears you want to cover your tracks this time with market research and non-specific polling. It's time to come clean and be transparent about the future of public transport cuts, which you clearly already have planned. Lord Mayor, which ferry services are next on the chopping block?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Cook. Also councillor Cook, I commend you on being a question about actual issues as well. Yeah, the direction of the question is obviously misguided and based on inaccurate and false information. But I do commend you on raising a real issue, unlike your so-called leader. What I can say about public transport is we are absolutely committed to improving it, improving it. And if you look at our budget record year after year, you will find that the funding for public transport and public transport infrastructure keeps going up. Brisbane keeps getting better and our funding for public transport keeps getting larger. And that is a record that we are very proud of. Now, we have every intention to continue improving public transport services, whether it's through Brisbane Metro or whether it's ferry services on the river. But you know what we would like to see through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cook, is people actually using those services. And so the idea that asking people what they think about how we can improve their services is somehow, you know, a questionable thing. I would simply say we will continue to talk to the community, to research improvements to public transport, to make sure that as we get more boats on the river, with our new double-decker city cats, when wooden-hulled ferries are progressively restored, we are in a position to improve ferry services. And we are in a position to see the patronage grow. Now, you are well aware, Mr Chair, through you, councillor Cook, that the Norman Park Ferry Terminal, which you keep talking about, and the Norman Park Ferry Service did not grow in about 15 years. Now, those are the facts. This is not something that we're making up. The facts show that the patronage on that service did not grow in 10 to 15 years. And so the idea that, that this is an example of, you know, more things to come is simply not true. Because it was actually the Norman Park Ferry Service which was the least-used service in the entire ferry network. But what we will do is we'll make sure that as we improve the network, those services to other parts of the river, those services that are in high demand and that people actually want to get on and use, and the numbers continue to grow, that we invest in more services and better facilities and better terminals and better infrastructure and better boats as well. So that is our priority. So councillor Cook, we know...
Point of order, councillor Cook.
The question was very clear. Which ferry services are next on the chopping block? Which will be cut?
Thank you councillor Cook. The question's being answered, to Lord Mayor.
And Mr Chair, I have made it clear that the basis of the question is inaccurate because we're looking at improving ferry services. We're looking at improving terminals. We're looking at improving the vessels that are used on the routes. That's what we're doing. So we don't have any such intent, councillor Cook. And it is quite mischievous of anyone to suggest that we do. We were very clear about the reasons behind the Norman Park decision. And we stand by those reasons and nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. And what I can say though is that our intention is to make sure that we direct public funding to where the need is the greatest. That's what we will do. And that's why we will work with the community to improve their services, whether it's bus services or ferry services. And we're also not afraid of making the right decisions, even though they may be tough, on behalf of the people of Brisbane. That's what we are elected to do.
Well, which ones will be cut?
And as we heard, I think it was a quote from the late Ian Brusasco, there will always be someone who's upset with the decision that you make in local government, but we will not take that advice because we will continue to make decisions based in the interests of the people of Brisbane and the city of Brisbane. And we will not be deterred by, in each of those decisions, some people being against the decision. Because in the end, if it's the right decision and it's based on the right information and the right evidence, and it's also in the public interest, then we are prepared to stand up for those decisions. And so we'll continue to invest more into public transport. We'll continue to invest more into the ferry network. And that, I can guarantee, Mr Chair.
Further questions? councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of Public and Active Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, this morning we hit a milestone in our Green Bridges program. Can you please update the chamber on the preferred alignments for the West End Green Bridges and the feedback that we have received from the community?
councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you for the question, councillor Owen. I'm excited to say that just this morning, we hit another milestone in the Green Bridges program. Consultation on proposed alignments for the West End Green Bridges finished up at the end of March. And now that we know what the community want, we've selected an alignment for each bridge. The Lord Mayor and I were proud to stand up this morning with space for cycling to announce that 600 Coronation Drive to Orly Park has been selected as the preferred alignment for the Tuwong to West End Green Bridge. And for the St Lucia Bridge, the winning alignment is Guyat Park to Orly Park. These were both referred to as option A during consultation with the community. The local community has told us, Chair, loud and clear that their preferences for the bridge alignments, and we have listened. The 600 Coronation Drive to Orly Park alignment received 83% support from the 2,300 people that provided feedback on the Tuwong to West End Bridge. Option B, which proposed to connect to Archer Street mid-block to Orly Park near Drury Street, received 40% support. And option C, which suggested a bridge between Archer Street near Glen Road and Orly Park near Drury Street, received only 27% support. People have told us that they prefer option A for the Tuwong Bridge for a number of reasons. Firstly, it's the best spot for a gentler bridge grade that would make the bridge accessible for all. It will connect two high-density areas with better amenity compared to other options. It could provide good connectivity to public transport on both sides of the bridge and provide opportunities for new green space at 600 Coronation Drive. And it won't impact the character homes on Archer Street, which people simply think would be better used than other alignments. Now, moving to the St Lucia Bridge, more than 1,900 people had their say on the three alignment options there. Option A for Guyat Park to Orly Park received 64% support and was the clear preference. Option B, which was Munro Street to Ryan Street, received only 22% support and was the least popular, with option C proposing a connection from Keith Street to Boundary Street, also relatively unpopular with only 35% support. And again, through the consultation process, the community told us exactly why option A is the best St Lucia Bridge. Firstly, the community identified that it would connect in well with walking and cycling paths and enhance the existing river loop and improve access to high-frequency bus services to South Brisbane and the CBD. The Guyat Park to Orly Park option also avoids the need for private resumptions, would have less impact on the character of local streets. Of course, this option would offer a park-to-park connection on either side of the river and would also connect UQ and St Lucia to Montague Road and the fantastic dining, entertainment, and retail precincts in that area. Similar to option A for Tuwong Bridge, the alignment would deliver a flat and more comfortable bridge grade and was perceived as the most logical alignment. Now, council received over 4,000 pieces of feedback from the community on the bridge alignment options, and the community provided us with insight and perspectives that we needed so we can take the next steps. Now that we know what the community want, option A for both bridges, these are the two alignments that we will move forward with. And options B and C for both bridges will not progress any further. What also became abundantly clear through the consultation process is that delivery of the Tuwong to West End Bridge is viewed as the priority out of the two. The local community expressed greater confidence in the need and desire for a green bridge connecting Tuwong with West End. And while there was support for a St Lucia to West End Green Bridge, it was very clear that the community is feeling more ready for the Tuwong Bridge. We've taken this on board and as the Lord Mayor announced earlier today, council will prioritize delivery of the Tuwong to West End Green Bridge in line with the community's feedback. The next steps will involve preparing concept designs and preliminary business cases based on the preferred alignment for each bridge in the second half of this year. As part of this process, officers will also assess the benefits, impacts, and costs of these bridges. It was clear that the community has taken a keen interest in the bridges and we want to get them right. So council will go back to the community later this year to discuss detailed, detailed concept designs. Once the business cases are ready at the end of the year, these will be fundamental to our discussions with both state and federal government around funding. We've been very clear from the beginning that the Green Bridges program will require funding support from other levels of government. So one of the next steps will be initiating these conversations. Mr Chair, in addition to this milestone for the West End Bridges, the Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek Green Bridges are powering along as well. We've got our two shortlisted tenders for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge and we'll be awarding that contract very soon to the lucky tenderer. We're getting closer to completing the design for the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge and later this year we'll award the contract to one of our three shortlisted tenders. Of course, both of these bridges will start construction on the ground before the end of the year. And Chair, all of these projects will transform our city, which is what this administration is all about.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. That concludes question time. Councillors, the consideration of committee reports, please. The Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 10th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 10th of May 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate, the Lord Mayor?
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I have, I'm seeking further following information from the Lord Mayor in relation to item B, which is the minor administrative amendment to the Brisbane City Council plan.
Please, yep, please proceed. Please, yep, please proceed.
-2014, package J. In paragraph 11 of the report, it says that amending the definition of the residential flood level to reflect the 1% annual exceedance probability flood level. Lord Mayor, could you clarify whether that is referring to a change-
Councillor Johnston, questions through me, please.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr Chairman. Could the Lord Mayor please clarify whether that is a change to the existing flood level, which is the 2011 flood level plus 500 mils for each household? And if so, how does that impact on that?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. We will seek that information for councillor Johnston and make sure that she is responded to on that issue. Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move into other matters, I just wanted to highlight a couple of important issues this week. This week marks National Volunteer Week, which is the largest celebration of volunteers and volunteerism in Australia, and it provides an opportunity for us to highlight the roles of volunteers in society and to say thank you to all volunteers. A recent report shows that more than 3 million Queenslanders aged over 18 participated in some form of volunteering in 2020, which is a truly outstanding effort. Obviously, we'd like to see even more than that, which is why we'll be lighting up Brisbane City Hall, Sandgate Town Hall, Victoria and Story Bridges and the Tropical Dome at Mount Cootha red this evening. And I want to say thank you in particular to the volunteers that support various council programmes and initiatives, and whether they are bush care groups, whether they are the Brisbane Greeters, the volunteer guides at Mount Cootha and the Botanic Gardens, and a whole range of other volunteer programmes that we work with them on. They do a fantastic job in helping us to build a better Brisbane. Tomorrow marks Wear Orange Wednesday, the national day celebrating and thanking the Queensland State Emergency Service. Obviously, the SCS is a not-for-profit volunteer emergency service organisation, enabled by both local and state governments, and they do a tremendous amount of work for our community. And in those times of need, whether it's storms or floods or bushfires, or whether it's assisting the police with missing persons searches, we know that when those volunteers in orange turn up, we are eternally grateful for the work that they do. These are people that give up their own private time, not only to do this kind of work, but also to train as well. And so we thank them for what they do, and then we'll be lighting up the Victoria Story Bridges, Radcliffe Place and Tropical Dome in orange tomorrow. Saturday and Sunday sees the return of the Panieri Greek Festival. It's the 45th year. It will be a different Greek festival this year. It won't be the same tens of thousands of people in Musgrave Park that we are used to, but they are hosting a number of events in the Greek Club precinct and online. Obviously, the COVID safe environment that we're in means that it can't be the same as it has been in the past this year. But I did want to point out, they're doing a Honey Puff Drive-Thru in the Greek Club precinct, so that's something to mark in your calendar for this weekend, the Honey Puff Drive-Thru. In support of Panieri, we'll be lighting up the Victoria Story Bridge and Radcliffe Place sculptures in blue and white on Saturday. Did want to raise a couple of other issues that came up in council question time just now. Obviously, councillor Shree, through you, Mr Chair, I committed to finding out more information about the issue that you raised. It has been brought to my attention that you're aware of an issue relating to West Village development that's currently under construction, and he's confirmed, Mr Chair, for the record, that that's one of them. There are two issues that we're aware of in relation to this development, but it's important that councillors are aware of the nature of these changes. There was a request to remove a tree to cater for the new Blue City Glider buses, which, as we know, the articulated longer buses to-
Councillor Shree's been asking for it.
To carry more people. And that has unfortunately necessitated the removal of one tree for a public good, for a public transport benefit that will deliver an improvement to public transport services with larger buses on that route. The second tree that I'm aware of related to that development was that West Village had to amend their plans to cater for this larger bus stop. So they've had to redesign the location for utility services and fire boosters, which were obviously a significant safety issue. And so there's two issues there that I'm aware of. I'll continue to look into this matter, but as we can see, it's not exactly the way that councillor Shree portrayed it. There are, as I said, hoops to jump through when anyone is requesting a tree removal, and in this case, these two cases, it's for significant public good that these changes are being made. Better public transport services with longer buses and a bigger bus stop, and then the need to relocate some essential fire and safety services. So I'll continue looking into this issue councillor Shree to determine what other facts there are. But I did have to comment on councillor Cassidy's performance and questions in question time. This question time was quite extraordinary that they are so bereft of ideas and the leader of their team is so bereft of ideas that he has resorted to stale, discredited arguments that we used unsuccessfully in the last election campaign. Now, I know that councillor Cassidy seems to think that, you know, council is a bit of a joke and question time is a bit of a joke and his responsibility is a bit of a joke. And so as we sit in council today, councillor Cassidy is reading a book called Plots and Prayers by Nicky Savva. It's a book about Malcolm Turnbull's demise and Scott Morrison's ascension. And I would simply say that councillor Cassidy knows it's the dying days of the Cassidy opposition leadership. He knows that it's over, he knows there's another Labor councillor coming to get him, and he's trying to get some tips from the demise of Malcolm Turnbull on how he can avoid that takeover ploy. So all I can say councillor Cassidy is good luck, you will need it. But Mr Chair, moving on to items in front of us. Item A, Mr Proposed Easement Resumption for the Naru Street, the Gap Drainage Design Project. It's a submission for the resumption of easements for drainage purposes affecting two properties in Denning Street, two properties in Madeira Street and one property in Payne Road, the Gap. Much of the existing stormwater system in the vicinity of this area was constructed during the 1960s, and the structures are now nearing the end of their useful age and hydraulic capacity. The Naru Street, the Gap Drainage Design Project involves constructing new major drainage infrastructure to upgrade the existing drainage capacity, including the installation of a new outlet headwall and outlet works to the existing open drain within private property on the northern side of Tapalane, the Gap. And so it's not possible unfortunately to undertake all works within the existing road and publicly-owned corridors, and so there are private easements required to facilitate this project. So this is about resuming those easements, and I just did want to point out that negotiations for compensation will continue concurrently with the formal resumption process. Item B, Minor Administrative Amendment, package J, proposes changes to the city plan to include updates to flood planning information and other mapping layers, as well as administrative updates to improve the usability and effectiveness of the planning scheme. Through council's flood action plan and in response to the Queensland Flood Commission of Inquiry, council committed to an incremental approach to update flood information using the most current information available. Several flood studies have been completed in recent years and are now being incorporated into the city plan. Brisbane River flood planning areas are to be updated based on the state government's 2017 Brisbane River catchment flood study, 1% AEP flood levels. Creeks and waterway flood planning areas are to be updated based on the five latest creek flood studies undertaken, including Moghl Creek, Perrin Creek, Cubberla Creek, Wollston Creek and Cabbage Tree Creek. With the completion of the Brisbane River flood study and in line with current industry and council standards, the residential flood level definition will also be updated to the 1% AEP flood event level mentioned above. These amendments to the city plan will take effect on the 28th of May, so later this month. Item C relates to the advertising devices' local law. The purpose of item C is obviously to adopt the new local law, which will replace the existing advertisements' local law and the advertisements' subordinate local law. The chamber will remember that this item was brought to full council on the 23rd of March-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension. Second.
An extension of time has been moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it, the Lord Mayor, a further 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The chamber will remember that the item was brought to full council on the 23rd of March this year before undergoing a period of public consultation and also state interest check. It was pleasing to note that it received the full support of the chamber with no councillor voting against the item at the time. Public consultation took place between the 24th of March and the 14th of April, and the state interest check ran from the 24th of March to the 22nd of April. In total, we received 14 public submissions and also eight responses in addition to that from various state government departments. I don't believe we received any submissions from any councillors in the chamber. As with any technical document, not the least of all a local law amendment, it's commonplace to receive feedback recommending ways to improve the drafting and similar such suggestions. As the chamber is able to note in attachment C, we were happy to accommodate a number of the amendments to provide greater clarity as to the meaning and effect of the local law. I would like to thank the residents, the state government and also industry groups for providing feedback on these proposed changes. And as I said, while we've made a few minor changes since it last came through the chamber, the overall intent hasn't changed. The local law is about better ensuring that advertising devices in Brisbane are located, designed and operated in accordance with reasonable community expectations. We are a responsive council, and it was in response to community concerns, and in particular concerns raised by councillor Matic in his local area, that this change was initiated. And the change also adopts a modernised drafting standard to provide for a regulatory framework that allows council to respond to advancements in technology, industry innovation and changes in community sentiment. So this means that as the type of advertising devices change and the technology changes, we can continue to adapt. But also, as an organisation, we need to make sure that while it is fair and reasonable for local businesses to be able to advertise, and in fact for all businesses to be able to advertise, that it needs to be done in a way that's sensitive to community expectations. And so the continued modification and adaptation of those standards is important to make sure that we not only support local business but also support our community. Well, you know that there were cases where people had concerns about type of advertising devices being used in certain areas, and those concerns have been responded to and addressed through this local law. So I will leave my comments at this. I also did want to point out that the document in front of us also includes changes to election signage across the city of Brisbane, and those changes I have no doubt will be fully supported by all sides of the chamber and reflect a return to previous standards that existed whereby election signage was managed in a reasonable way, but it was not a free-for-all across the city. And so these are a return to the standards that were introduced, I think, by the previous Labor administration many, many years ago. And they existed prior to either Campbell Newman or Graham Quirk or myself, and we're seeing a return to those. I would point out that this administration did lead the way when it came to banning plastic wrap on polling booths, and an agreement reached amongst all parties to stop that wasteful practice. And I think the changes that are being made relating to election signage also help reduce the wastefulness and the significant free-for-all and visual pollution across the city that was happening as a result of more recent changes to the local law. So we have listened to people, we have listened to the community, and I think that these changes will provide a good, balanced outcome that will be good for the city of Brisbane.
Before we proceed to further speakers, can I please acknowledge retired councillor Brian Battersby is in the gallery with us today. Brian, of course, was a councillor in Pine Rivers and Moreton Bay for 40 years, and he's here today representing the Hills Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Brian. Thank you for being with us today. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just at the outset, could I ask that item A be taken seriatum for voting purposes?
Item A, seriatum for voting.
Yeah, just by itself, thank you.
Please proceed.
Yeah, thanks. I have to, just at the outset, Chair, say how disappointed and slighted I am at the Lord Mayor's performance. He normally spends 10 minutes talking about me and Labor, but this time all he could muster was one minute and two seconds, Chair. So he's running out of puff, I think, on that front, on that front, Chair. I thought he had more in him. On clause A, Chair, this is easement resumptions for drainage project at the Gap. No residents have submitted any objections to those resumptions. We'll be supporting this item going through. Clause B is the minor amendment, minor administrative amendment to Brisbane City Plan. So this amendment here and these changes show us that it's very clear that council's becoming more and more favourable to developers under the LMP, Chair. Instead of city planners determining density and location of developments based on their own educated parameters, this LMP Shrinna Council wants to model the city based on current development approvals. So now sports fields are under threat after the LMP reached closed-door deals with developers to put a truck depot on the Brisbane Polo Grounds. There could be 15-storey hotels within metres of small unit complexes and childcare centres after recent approvals in Spring Hill, thanks to the LMP. Facing future planning decisions of this LMP council's closed-door development approvals sets a dangerous precedent.
Councillor Cassidy, isn't this about waterways?
This is the minor administrative amendment to Brisbane City Plan.
That's right, which is about-
Yeah, and there's a table, there's a table in this package, Chair, which details zoning changes as a result of development approvals, which I'm going through now.
Oh, right. So as I say, it's about, it's a measure about the flood mapping, and can I just ask you, I appreciate you building an argument, but can I ask you to focus your comments on the flood mapping, please?
Well, there are other elements in there as well, Chair, and I'll be focusing on them. It talks about maintain, this package talks-
No, no, when I offer a direction, the direction must be accepted.
But this package isn't only about flood mapping, Chair. So you can't, you can't say to me that I need to talk about one specific part of this package and not other parts of this package.
I'm, all right. Look, councillor Cassidy, I'm trying to find the section, as you well know, I try my best to provide latitude, and I'm trying to find the section that you're referring to. So can you please proceed, but be mindful that this is, the purpose of this is flood mapping. Councillor Cassidy.
So this package and the papers that were provided to us, Chair, talks about maintaining economic growth, but fails to mention livability of how this council plans to give residents a real and genuine say on planning processes. We've had, as you would be very aware, Chair, thousands of residents rallying in recent weeks, spending hours of time and thousands of dollars in their bid to be heard, and no matter how loud residents get, this LMP administration remains as arrogant as ever. Clause C, Chair, advertising devices' local law. This topic, Chair, is one of the Lord Mayor's favourites, advertising, as we know full well. We have a number of changes to the advertising devices' local law before us today, and these changes that have been made after it went out to so-called consultation are in response to a measly 14 submissions, 14 public submissions. Of those 14 submissions, eight were from advertising companies, two were active transport advocacy groups, and good on them, one was a community organisation, and just two residents had their say on this advertising devices' local law. Advertising devices are targeted at residents, Chair. They are the key stakeholder in this local law, and only two residents and three community and advocacy groups across the entire city were given a say. city were given a say. And perhaps because the consultation period was deliberately held from March 24 to April 15 this year, right in the middle of the Easter school holidays when everyone was away or getting over, getting over a snap lockdown. So perhaps because this consultation period, perhaps maybe, that was, Chair, because the consultation period wasn't publicly announced by this LMP Shrinna administration. So once again, we see this LMP Lord Mayor sneaking changes through and actively avoiding any genuine community consultation. It's an absolute sham and exposes this LMP administration for who they truly are. It's deceitful and disgraceful, Chair. Advertising companies were clearly given a heads-up to put submissions in. Erbus, Outdoor Media Association, O Media, Big Outdoor, PTY LTD, Paradise Outdoor Advertising, Bishop Outdoor Advertising, Goal Billboards, and French advertising giant JC Deco all put in extensive submissions.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to Deputy Mayor.
Will Councillor Cassidy take a question?
Councillor Cassidy, will you take a question?
Nope.
No, he's declined.
While residents and their thoughts were avoided like the plague by this LMP administration, this is exactly the type of behaviour that tears shreds off any trust residents have left with this council, Chair. It's why we're seeing rallies every weekend against this LMP Lord Mayor and administration and against you, Chair. It's arrogant and it's time for change in City Hall.
Further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I rise to speak to item A, which is the submission for the resumption of easements for drainage purposes in the Gap. As the Lord Mayor said, the infrastructure in this area has, is nearing the end of its use-by date, and so work needs to be undertaken to resolve the problems and issues with flooding in and around Naru Street. There are a number of properties that will be affected by the works. Unfortunately, we can't undertake the works in existing easements, so we have to have volumetric easements through some private properties, and those private properties, two in Denning Street, two in Madeira Street, and one property at Payne Road. As I said, this is in, is in the Gap. The Shrinna administration chair has budgeted more than $65 million over the next four years for drainage construction resilience, as well as more than $50.2 million for stormwater infrastructure, and this particular project is one of those projects that is included in that budget. And I know that the local councillor, councillor Toomey, is very supportive of this. I'm pleased that the Labor Party will be supporting this item. Is this something that is required for the residents in terms of keeping their area safe from flooding? We do live in a city built on a flood plain, and our focus as an administration is on projects which minimise flooding impacts on properties and infrastructure by delivering sustainable solutions to improve our flood resilience. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on items B and C. Just firstly, with respect to items C, it is, it is quite a cynical ploy, I think, for an administration to change the rules at a time in the electoral cycle that suits themselves, run two elections with an unlimited number of signs, and then at a time when the electoral cycle is moving, go back to the rules that limited the number of electoral signs. The only people that benefits are incumbents. That is not good for our democracy, and I think that the federal government's going to get a shock when they realise that they're back to 150 signs per federal electorate. We can only put up 50. I couldn't print enough signs last time, and I know councillor Sri was sort of in the same boat. So it is a really cynical ploy, in my view, that the Lord Mayor, at a time when he knows he's on the way out, changes the rules back to protect, to protect his incumbency to, rather than to allow all candidates to engage in, you know, a fair democratic, a fair democratic contest. For the last two elections, it's been good enough for him to have as many election signs up as you want, Mr Chairman, but, but now it's too much. So I, I think this is a very, very cynical attempt. Obviously, we'll work within the rule of now 50 signs again, but I look forward to the feedback you'll be getting from your own colleagues on the LMP about how you've cut them off at the knees at the next federal election, Lord Mayor. My understanding is they were a big part of, of why you changed the rules the first time round. So that is very concerning, but I am most concerned today about the minor amendment in package J. And I flag, I have asked a question about this because I am a little bit unsure about the impact of this, and I am both asking questions and seeking information. Any change to the flood mapping and city plan in this city massively impacts on my ward and a number of other wards in, in the city. These changes can have enormous impacts on residential property prices, on people's ability to gain insurance, and this is a massive issue for residents in my ward. If, if their flood mapping changes, they may no longer be able to obtain flood insurance. Their flood insurance goes through the roof. I've got people who pay over $10,000 a year for insurance just for flood. It is a phenomenal issue whenever any kind of flood mapping is changed. Now, and I stand to be corrected on this, but as I read this package, it has not gone out for public consultation, and we are proposing to adopt the changes today. That's what recommendation A indicates. So my question, Mr Chairman, through you, to the Lord Mayor, to the planning chairperson, if she's going to speak, is can she confirm there's been no public consultation to date on these proposed changes? The Lord Mayor has indicated in his speech they come into effect within two weeks, within two weeks, so I presume there is no public consultation. Why there is no public consultation about the changes to the flood mapping? How many homes are impacted by the change to flood mapping? It's very unclear to me. I mean, at the moment, we rely on a set of flood mappings and a height level that has become quite well-known to people post the 2011 floods, but if that's changing, we should be talking to the community about it. And when this came up, you know, when I read the council papers over the weekend, you know, it's, it's quite a difficult issue for people, and I just, I just don't know that there's been enough information about this out there. So I very much am seeking information at this point about what the reference to amending the definition of the residential flood level to reflect the 1% AEP flood level. So how does that impact on the habitable floor level that is required with new house and unit developments in residential parts of our city? How many houses are going to be impacted, and units and townhouses are going to be impacted by this change? It's, I don't think it is just a straight technical change, and I would certainly like some more information about how it's going to impact on my residents, and as I said, there are a number of other wards in this place that are a big, a big issue. So certainly at this stage, I don't have enough information to make a decision about this. I have, I have some concerns that we don't know necessarily the full impact of all of this, and to my knowledge, it's not in the public sphere. So I would ask that the Lord Mayor or the deputy mayor stand up and give us some more details about how many houses are impacted by these changes. I know that there's an indication they'll be written to, but the first thing these people do is then ring their local councillor and say, what does this mean? What does this mean? And I don't know what this means, and I am extremely concerned that every time this administration plays around the city plan, they get it wrong. So at this stage, I am definitely seeking more information about this, and I hope I get it before we have to vote on the debate today.
Further speakers? Councillor Matic.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak in regards to item C, the advertising devices local law. And I, I'm very encouraged by having this, this local law before us today for what it means for not only the Paddington community but the city as a whole. As, as the chamber would know, Mr Chair, this matter arose last year as, as a result of what became aware to us, which was a deficiency in the assessment process of a advertising device up on Latrobe Terrace at Paddington. I raised this with the Lord Mayor at the time, and to his credit, and I have to genuinely and wholeheartedly thank him for the absolutely decisive and responsive way that he responded to that concern by being able to introduce the advertising interim local law later in the year. That provided what I thought was a very important step forward in the review of that assessment process and gave the people of Paddington, the community of Paddington, but also the city as a whole, some comfort in regards to firstly, council adhering, listening to their concerns, and secondly, taking the necessary steps to rectify it. Certainly acknowledged that at the time, the chamber wholeheartedly supported the, the interim measure, and as a result, the council then moved forward with this particular local law in the advertising period. And I recall quite clearly that the chamber as a whole supported that local law then proceeding to advertising, so I'm a bit of a lost to understand councillor Cassidy's comments about this allegedly being a secretive process when it was fully supported by him and all councillors on both sides, and encouraged, I remember the words encouragement, by all councils, particularly councillor Sri at the time, of making sure that this was being brought out to the general community and certainly encouraging the community to make their feedback. And so we are here today. Mr Chairman, this is a huge step forward in regards to the assessment process, and importantly protects that character overlay that was so quite obviously missing in the initial assessment in Paddington, and provides that level of certainty and security for community. As administration, we greatly value the tin and timber within our suburbs, that's demonstrated every single day, and protecting the character overlay of key areas like the strip on Latrobe and Given Terrace is absolutely fundamental. This local law reinforces this administration's commitment to making sure that we continue to do that. Importantly also, it gives greater assistance to the officers in their assessment processes in regards to advertising billboards and signage, devices generally, and as the Lord Mayor said, as technology continues to improve in this space, this local law will, is flexible enough to be able to assess that, those devices, and importantly, put in place the necessary criteria to protect local community interests and also to enhance the local community atmosphere. So, Mr Chair, I, once again, I want to thank the Lord Mayor very much for his action. I want to thank the support of Cabinet in regards to that decision, councillor Marks very much so for her oversight as the chair in delivering this outcome, and of course the officers for being able to undertake the administrative process that brings it here today for the benefit of the city as a whole, and on behalf of the residents of Paddington, I say thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. Just briefly on the advertising local law, I, I think my concerns about the proliferation of corporate advertising in the city are well-known, and I don't believe this new version of the local law goes far enough in addressing the proliferation of advertising. I think reasonable people can probably disagree about that, but I, I think there's still way too much advertising around the public realm of Brisbane, and I've noticed, it was a few years ago, but the last time I went down to Canberra, it was refreshing to see how little public advertising they had down in that city. I think Brisbane's better than Canberra in a lot of ways, but certainly the, they have much tighter rules on billboard advertising, for example, and I think the visual amenity of the city is a lot better for it, and I, I wish we would follow that example that the ICT has set in that respect. And, and hopefully that's something that, if we get an administration that's a little less closely tied to the corporate advertising industry in the future, we might be able to see some more significant reforms. My reading of this particular local law is that it, it doesn't really do a whole lot to address those broader concerns of residents, but the, the main point I wanted to drill down into was simply the fact that so few people seem to have made submissions on this local law amendment, even though we know that lots of residents out there have concerns about advertising and the proliferation of billboards. We get complaints through to my office fairly often. I know there's particularly a lot of concern about the proliferation of really bright electronic billboards along main roads. And I think the fact that so few people have made submissions on, on this local law amendment process shows that the council didn't do a very good job of promoting consultation or inviting submissions. And just sort of out of interest, I was having a scan back through the Brisbane City Council Facebook page, and I can't see any references at all on the, on the main social media channels to notifying people that the local law was being amended or inviting people to give feedback. The Brisbane City Council Facebook page has, at the moment, about 164,000 followers. That's a very big platform, that's a really good opportunity to engage people in conversations about local law amendments, in conversations about what kind of city they want. And the social media platform does a really good job of letting people know about compost workshops and celebrating festivals and all that sort of stuff, but we really should be using those platforms to engage people in discussions about stuff like this. We're not advertising our local law amendments via social media, we don't appear to be advertising major amendments to the city plan via social media, and I think the fact that there are so few submissions and public, so little public feedback regarding this advertising local law amendment is, and I don't mean to be rude, but it is a little bit embarrassing for the city council and for the council administration that you've done such a poor job of promoting engagement and soliciting feedback on this particular reform that people don't even know it's happening. I'm sure in a, in a couple of weeks, I'll get another complaint about a really bright billboard, and I'll tell residents, oh, they've actually just amended the local law, they had a public consultation, public submissions period about it, and I'll say, oh, I had no idea, no one told me. Certainly, I've done my best to get the word out, but I think the council administration has a responsibility to inform the public about these amendments, and I don't think it's entirely incorrect of councillor Cassidy, I think he used the word secret, I guess words like that are a bit emotive, but I don't think we did a particularly good job of promoting this. And I think there are lots of people out there who have very, very strong feelings about how advertising should be regulated and where it should be allowed, et cetera, who haven't had the opportunity to feed into this process. And I, I lay the blame for that slowly at the feet, solely at the feet of the administration, because I think if this council administration was genuine in wanting public feedback and genuine about engaging the community in these important conversations, you would have done a better job of promoting it. I'd be interested to know whether any of the councillors, or probably the Lord Mayor won't even answer this question, but was there any mention of this reform in the newsletter? I don't, I don't remember seeing it in any of, any of the Lord Mayor's newsletters. That again is...
I don't know that it's...
Yeah, that, that again is another great opportunity to promote these, these conversations. Those newsletters are used to advertise a lot of the other stuff that council's doing, but why, why don't we use those newsletters as an opportunity to invite feedback on these important decisions? The lack of community engagement and the lack of meaningful public consultation about the advertising local law reforms, I think, compares quite poorly to the recent consultation on the, on the Green Bridges. I was obviously a bit critical that there wasn't even enough promotion of the Greenbridge consultation and enough opportunities for public feedback on that process, but it was a heck of a lot better than what's happened here. I think out of the couple of million Brisbane residents, maybe a couple hundred are aware that the advertising local law is being updated outside of Brisbane City Council offices and, and key stakeholders, obviously, but if we, if you went out to the general public, I think very few people would be aware that the advertising local law has been amended, even though quite a lot of people would have concerns about it. And I'm, I'd be interested to know if other councillors made any efforts to promote the reform process through their networks and email newsletters and social media. I don't really think it should be the job solely of councillors, though, I think really it would be nice to see the administration put in some resources into this, some sponsored Facebook posts perhaps, or, like I said, mentioning it in the email newsletters. And so what all that boils down to is that I don't think the council has a particularly strong mandate to say this reform has the enthusiastic and vocal support of the community because the community hasn't been meaningfully engaged on the reforms. Certainly, there's been plenty of submissions from advertising corporations, and quite a few larger billboard advertising companies seem to have made submissions. They know how to manipulate the wheels of power, and they know how to make sure they get involved in these discussions. They knew it was happening, and I'd be interested to know whether the council deliberately or specifically sought feedback from those advertising companies. Did we write to any of those corporations and say, hey, we, we'd like you to make a submission? a submission? Or were they just well-resourced and savvy enough to proactively make submissions? Either way, their voices have been disproportionately overrepresented in this conversation. Their feedback has been given weight, but that silent majority of Brisbane residents who are concerned about advertising has been ignored and overlooked. And I'm sure the Lord Mayor's going to stand up here and say, oh, well councillor Sri, you didn't even make a submission. I've said many times in, shared many times in this place, my concerns about advertising, but more to the point, I don't have a lot of faith that the administration seriously considers the submissions that other councillors provide in good faith. I've made time in the past to write detailed submissions on local law amendments and have found that those evidence-based and legitimate ideas and proposals get overlooked or dismissed because they're at odds with the needs of the, the corporate sector and in this case, I, I have very little faith that the views of residents will be given much weight as against the views of corporate advertising companies. So I can't say I'm surprised by the process. I, I think to be fair, there are some positive elements in the new local law, there are some changes that I welcome, but like I said at the outset, it, it doesn't go nearly, anywhere near far enough to addressing the concerns that residents in this city hold. And I just hope that down the track, we, we can have another crack at this and, and do a better job of updating the local law to really get to the heart of what residents are concerned about when they feel like they can't walk down their street without being bombarded by marketing and capitalist propaganda. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you Mister Chair, and I rise to speak on item B and item C if I have a, I have time because there's a lot of questions I need to answer about minor amendment J, the package here, that is a minor administrative amendment to changes to maintain the currency of the Brisbane city plan. And there is a few different parts to it. The main part obviously is updating the flood planning information. That is based on the flood overlay mapping, based on the state government. So the state government finished their Brisbane River flood study in 2017. So this is about then changing the definitions around to 1% AEP flood levels. And it's also the flood overlay mapping that council have been doing as well and we have just completed our creeks and waterway study over five catchment areas, which is Moghl Creek, Perrin Creek, Cubblea Creek, Walston Creek and Cabbage Tree Creek as well. So the residential flood level administrative definition is going to be changed and I'll answer the question that we got from the other side as well. The other part of this that councillor Cassidy was alluding to has nothing to do with a truck depot in the eastern suburbs that was being built on industrial land or a 15-storey apartments and hotels in Spring Hill that was on code assessable because it'd been through the neighbourhood plan. This is about making sure that we lined up with all of the priority development areas that state government are enforcing on us across Brisbane. That is the reality, what this is. We've had three new PDAs, including Willing Gaba Cross River Rail, Roma Street Cross River Rail, Boggo Road Cross River Rail. We also then of course have the other things that the state pulls every now and then when they don't want us to assess anything, called a ministerial infrastructure designation, which we got on the New Farm State School site as well. So we need to draw line all of those four things that the state government just took and said, this is what we're doing into the city plan. That is the amendments we have to do. In addition to that, we have had neighbourhood plans that we've been looking at over the last few years, so we have looked at some of the heritage that we've had to add. So we've added pre-1911 building overlays in accordance with planning approvals. We have refined 24 sites in commercial character building overlay to reflect planning approvals or some errors that were in the mapping. We have refined two heritage places for their curtlich and of course, we've also done things in terminology to make sure that the reference and, cross-references and terminology and formatting kind of all fit. So this is not the city plan, as we heard from councillor Johnson and councillor Cassidy. This is not anything about the Greens Branch meeting rally that I went to 10 days ago. This is not anything about the residents and what they may have been contacting me about that councillor Cassidy is trying to beat up like he's trying to beat up everything else unsuccessfully. This is about making sure everything is updated. So when we talk about the actual flood mapping that we have here, after the January 2011 floods, let's just do a bit of a history lesson, the residential flood level definition was adopted as the higher of the 2011 flood or the defined flood level for residential flood levels. So after the flood study that we got in 2017 from the state, we are updating the new flood level definition to 1% AEP flood level. This does not mean that the actual defined flood level is changing, it's just the new terminology. The DFL for Brisbane River flooding is still 3.7 metres AHD at the Brisbane city gauge based on 6,800 cubic metres per second, just being technological on this and technical, I should say, but any of us here 10 years ago knew those, knew those numbers very, very well. But what it is referring to is that currently the DFL is referred to in the definition. Under this amendment, the RFL, so the RFL will change to 1% AEP flood level. So the new river flooding level is that. The defined flood level is used to set the floor level, so that is generally in commercial developments and some aspects of other car parking and that is not changing. So when councillor Johnson asked the question about the defined flood level, that is not changing. In particular, there was a comment there about the 500mm. The 500mm is talking about the freeboard, so in table D and L, to get technical again, the flood overlay codes are used to figure out what the freeboard has to be for different aspects of development. So for example, after 2011, if you're in a residential development, everything that is a habitable room or has electrical services in it has to be 500mm above that defined flood level and in non-habitable rooms, it needs to be 300mm above that flood level. So that is not changing. The freeboard is not changing. What may change in some people's properties depending on this new methodology is some may go up, some may go down, depending on what the mapping is. Every single person that is actually going to be getting a change is going to be actually contacted as well. And can I just go through the communications that did happen on this, remembering this is a minor amendment, not a major amendment that goes out to consultation, state interest check, council consultation, second state interest check. This is a minor amendment. So there was a lot of communication done across the city on this over the last four or five years. This is not something that has taken four or five months. Everything on our online flood awareness maps and floodwise property reports have been updated and kept updated to reflect these studies that we've been doing. So on our flood strategy and flood studies mapping on our website, in our flooding in Brisbane and flood awareness map on our website and our floodwise property reports. We had two articles in July last year and in January this year in the Living in Brisbane newsletter on flood information update and getting flood prepared and check the website because there has been changes. Externally, we also, in the recent January 2021 rates sendout, there was a check your flood information updates as we do every year as we come into the wet season. We had community information sessions on Talk to a Flood Engineer in street meets, particularly around those five creek areas that we were reviewing over the last couple of years. We went to the home show in February on the 10th anniversary of the flood this year, time flies, to talk about the proposed flood themes and everything that was happening. There was stakeholder updates, anyone that got involved in the creek updates, we had the emails over the years and many, many ways that people could have found out if they were interested in knowing their properties and what the changes were, everything was always kept up to date. So as I said, it is a minor amendment to hazard mapping in accordance with the minister's guidelines. The flood studies have been undertaken by RPEQ and they have been accepted by the state government at this point of time, well, they've been approved by the state government, I should say, so that's why they're coming through here. It is now going to be taken through and incorporated into the city plan, including the updates to the zoning and the flood overlay mapping and amending the definition as residential flood level to 1% annual exceedance probability, not the defined flood level, the residential flood level. So as I said, other additional additions to pre-1911 buildings and commercial buildings and heritage across Brisbane and that will become effective planning scheme from the 28th of May. With regards to item C, in the short time I have before afternoon tea, and I know councillor Marks is going to talk a lot more about it, we brought this to council just before Easter in the last session. Councillor Marks spoke about it, I spoke about it, obviously the Lord Mayor spoke about it and E and C, and we made it very, very clear it was going out to community consultation. I do know there was very, very little feedback from those sitting on the other side of the room, I think one councillor gave us feedback. And surprise, surprise, the industry who were directly affected by it were very interested and put their feedback in as well. And I, again, absolutely refute the imputing motive that we heard from councillor Sri, how they manipulate the system. You said councillor Sri, that you told your community and you let them know and apparently you're very good at doing that on social media and we're not...
Councillor Adams, I must...
Through you Mister Chair, I'm sorry. Apparently he's very good at doing that and we're not. Still didn't get anything from his community. So what we hear when they say they've gone out and done the community engagement, the Greens were very, very loud about it when they thought it was an opportunity for state election, but didn't really care when it actually came round to looking at what they were complaining about 12 months ago, making the changes I think that the community asked for. And now all of a sudden, because the community didn't comment on it, it's obviously not what they wanted. So you can't have it both ways councillor Sri, can't ask for the changes and then complain when nobody says anything about it.
Point of order Chair.
Through you Mister Chair.
Point of order councillor Sri.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Councillor Adams.
And councillor Cassidy made no response, as did any of the Labour team or be interested. My question to him was going to be, how did you get the information out to your community so they were informed on one of your newsletters that has seven photos on it?
Councillor Sri, your misrepresentation.
Yeah, just to clarify, I didn't, I didn't say that the community didn't necessarily support the changes, I simply pointed out that we didn't do a very good job of promoting the changes to the community and I'm sorry if the deputy mayor feels a bit defensive about that, but...
Further speakers?
Point of order Chair.
Point of order to councillor Landers.
Mister Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that this council now adjourn for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it, the meeting will be adjourned when all councillors leave. Councillor Battersby, would you care to join us for afternoon tea? Welcome back councillors, are there any further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you Mister Chair, I stand to, I rise to speak on item C. The purpose of item C, as we've discussed here today, is to adopt the new advertising local law. As the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier, there was an issue in the Paddington ward and that we know from residents, they expect us to be responsive and act quickly in their interest and the way the current local law is drafted does not facilitate that or did not facilitate that. Now as a reminder, I just want to remind people that the new local law will retain all the provisions introduced under the interim local law. It also adopts modernised drafting standards and provides for a regulatory framework that allows council to respond to advancements in technology, industry innovation and changes in community sentiment. Now what do I mean by modernising drafting standards? So a local law is supported by three statutory documents that permitted advertising devices, rules and procedures, designs, assessment rules and procedures and technical guidelines. And it's the technical guidelines where they will deal with the issues that councillor Sri was talking about as far as luminosity, et cetera goes. And many of these provisions of the existing local laws have been incorporated into the permitted rules and procedures and design and assessment rules. And both of these documents were released for public consultation where residents and councillors could have their say. By transferring provisions, mostly in this existing subordinate law and moving them to statutory documents, it means we can be more adaptive to changes and community expectations and industry standards. So what is an example to show you what that means is at the moment, we, we do not have any ability to deal with any issues on state government roads. So as councillors, you will know, oftentimes you get complaints about signs, et cetera, and unfortunately, if they're on a state government road, all we can say to them is, I'm sorry, we can't help you, we can't do anything, it's on state land. So this provision is here, is about that if the state government ever should feel that they would like our assistance in dealing with some of these issues, we will then have the ability without having to go all the way back and go through all this process all again. And then the third statutory document which I talked about, which is the technical guidelines will not go to full public consultation or require the full support of public council when a change is needed. And that's a very simple reason and that is because it's called technical guidelines. These are very technical rules that are set up by the RPEQ traffic engineers and similar professionals with expertise in the field. Now I do note that there was some comments and commentation around how much or how little advertising around this local law was put out there to the community. I put my comments on the Facebook page asking for feedback, I had 300 and something odd likes, 126 shares, which I guess in the scheme of things is not a lot, but it's, it's a reasonable amount for my ward. And I do remember last time when we talked about this back in Hero March that, and councillor Sri actually did ask about the consultation, and I quite clearly advised all councillors to put this up on their Facebook pages and encourage residents' feedback. And as I said, I know I did that on my own Facebook page. And I have to say, actually, one of the people, one of the groups that did comment, which it affects adversely, in fact, the only group that it affects adversely, ironically enough, is a, is a community group in my ward, so you know, it just goes to show, there's no favours here just because you're a chair. And I also want to say, I can categorically state that I did not write to any advertising company about any of these upcoming laws, but one pe, some person I did meet with was Queensland Walks. We had a meeting not long before the end of the date that was due for submissions and they did ask if it was possible to have an extension of time so they could get their submission in and I, we asked officers and that was achieved and they were able to get their submission in and that was all about making it easier for people to walk around our great city and suburbs and as you can see, we have dealt with that as well. So look, on that note, I just want to say, if support is given by the chamber here today, we expect gazette of the local law to take place on the 21st of May. Thank you.
Further speakers? Further speakers, they're being done. I will now, we will now move to a vote. All those councillors in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. On items B and C, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy.
Division.
Thank you. All councillors are present, we will now proceed to the vote on items B and C. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. Thank you. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. And abstentions, please raise your hand. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour, one against and five abstentions.
The ayes have it. Councillors, we will proceed to the...
Point of order Chair.
A point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much Chair, I move suspension standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion, that Brisbane City Council introduces measures to audit and publish spending of all allowances given to councillors, chairs, the deputy mayor and Lord Mayor.
Second. I have an urgency motion, urgency motion has been proposed, I trust that's been circulated electronically, councillor Cassidy. All right, please proceed, you have three minutes to urgency, please.
Thanks very much Chair, this is urgent because residents simply don't trust Brisbane City Council as an organisation anymore. The LMP's culture of secrecy has stripped councils integrity. This Lord Mayor's lack of transparency or care and con...
Well, Chair, this, this urgently needs addressing because this Lord Mayor receives a $100,000 cash bonus, and it needs to be taken off him, or he needs to be held accountable, Chair, for how he spends it. And that's why it's urgent today, because residents deserve better than they are getting. It's public money, Chair, if it is an allowance, the public has a right to know how that money is being spent. Wouldn't you agree?
Aye.
All right, to the matter of urgency, all those who believe this matter to be urgent, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. We'll now proceed to the vote, all those in favour of the matter of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
We'll now proceed to the vote, all those in favour of the matter of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
Excuse me, clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 17 against.
The noes have it. Councillors, the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Landers, the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Be adopted, just while I'm speaking, is there any debate? Point of order.
I believe councillor Cook's trying to get your attention.
Oh, excuse me, councillor, all right, I will call councillor Adams in a moment, but I believe councillor Cook, you have a point of order?
Apologies, Mr Chair, I do have a point of order. I move the suspension of standing orders to allow me to move the following urgency motion. The Brisbane City Council immediately takes steps to livestream and publish on the council website all public Brisbane City Council committee meetings.
Seconded.
We have an urgency resolution proposed by councillor Cook. Councillor Cook, I trust you've distributed that electronically to the clerks?
Thank you, Mr Chair.
You have?
Yes.
All right, please proceed, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Chair, this is urgent because week after week we see presentations, petitions and other issues raised in council committee meetings that the rest of Brisbane have no idea are occurring. This is urgent because a modern council and city should have the ability for residents to tune in each week to committee meetings, that they are interested in to hear the latest updates and how their petitions are being dealt with, together with any general business arising. This is urgent, Mr Chair, because it is simply archaic to expect residents to physically attend City Hall if they want to know what is happening in committee meetings in our city. The reality is, Mr Chair, that only a couple of members of the public attend committee meetings at best each week. One of the reasons is because they are scheduled during business hours in the middle of the CBD. It is urgent, Mr Chair, because there is information released during committee meetings that should be easily and readily available to the people of Brisbane, not just as it happens, but also after the committee, committee meetings conclude. Mr Chair, this is urgent, as it has been highlighted even last week, that key announcements, like review of ferry services, are made without any formal record of those comments being made, publicly available, unlike council meetings. Mr Chair, this is urgent because the report, recording and publication of these meetings should be the minimum standard, and I ask all councillors to support immediately taking the necessary steps to livestream and publish on the council website all public Brisbane City Council committee meetings today.
To the matter of urgency, all those who believe this matter to be urgent, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook, please ring the bells. Councillors, on the matter of urgency, all those who believe the matter to be urgent, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no and raise your hand.
Aye.
Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 17 against.
The noes have it. Councillor Adams, the report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and just before we go to the report, let's make it very, very clear before we go out and livestream through our social media that we did not vote down the motions that they just put forward, we voted down their urgency, which is very, very different things, but they seem to not be able to understand this. The relevance is, I was named.
Councillors, please allow the speaker to be heard in silence.
Thank you, I was named in the first.
Point of order, Chair.
Motion, so I believe as the chair I can speak.
Excuse me, point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Relevance to the city planning report before us today?
Thanks, thanks councillor Cassidy, as, as you well know, I'm very generous to you and as a, I allow people a, a brief moment of general statements every now and then, so councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, Mr Chair, chairs can speak about anything in their port, portfolio, regardless of whether it's in the committee report today or not. The motion there before us, I was named in the first motion, so I think it's relevant for me to respond to that, about the urgency of something that's been debated 18 months ago. And on the last one, right now, I would like, while we're livestreaming to the hundreds of thousands of people that are watching right now, because they don't have the opportunity to get here because it's during work hours, I hope they will understand that here is what happened in committee last week, very, very clear, I'll summarise the committee. Before I do that, I would like to take the opportunity to tell those hundreds of thousands that are tuning in because they have the opportunity, that we had, the Business Hub again is continuing to be very, very business, very busy, again, many, many walk-ins, and what's coming up in the next week on the workshops, two workshops in particular, we have the, on the 19th tomorrow at 9am, the ingenious leadership with Paul Fairweather, tap into your creative thinking, and improve leadership qualities, and then we have a 5pm one on Thursday called retail therapy, which might be different to what we call retail therapy, councillor Marks. It's not about going shop-ity and doing retail therapy, it's about how we can support our CBD retailers through these difficult times, and their support and information there to go through the last 18 months, how we come out on the other end, being held by Urbis, Wellbeing Co, GWI and Retail Food Group. So don't forget to all councillors and the hundreds of thousands that are listening on the livestream right now, that businessinbrisbane.com.au is where you need to go to find out what's on at the Business Hub. Last week in committee, we spoke about the building and construction management team, we had a presentation from the compliance officers within that area, talking about the new team that was established in September last year, it's been split into two teams who look after north and south side of the river, they have combined the previously, what was delivered by the suburban construction management task force, the development assurances unit and the planned ceiling team, and now it is a much more efficient structure, and the aim of the BCMT is to work closely with the community and the building and construction industry to minimise the impacts during the construction management phase and ensure everything that is developed, that is built is carried out in accordance with approvals. There's a range of services, from proactive engagement to solve issues before they actually become problems, a single point of contact when assisting builders and developers to resolve issues, ability to educate builders and developers regarding the intent of conditions, ensuring builders and developers construct their projects in accordance with the development approvals granted by council, and make sure we can reduce the amount of complaints so the community have early involvement, have a one-stop-shop and know who they can talk to, to ensure potential issues are identified and resolved promptly. As I said, while we're livestreaming what happened in committee last week, I hope the hundreds of thousands that are watching are very excited and might like to pop along next week. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on item A, can I say to the people who are listening to the debate in council today, I value your participation in our democracy. I find it astonishing that the deputy mayor, Mr Chairman, is criticising people who may be listening.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, deputy mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Patronising people who may be listening today, and perhaps who would like to listen to committee.
Thanks councillor Johnston, we had a, we just had a resolution about whether we want to talk about that a moment ago, and that, that failed, so can I just ask you to come back to the matter at hand, please?
And I would have liked to have a debate on that, but the LMP voted against it. So just briefly on this, there is a very easy way that we can fix this problem, which is a significant problem in our city, that is more cars enforcement. There is no question in my mind that there is a big problem with development, compliance with development conditions, a massive problem with compliance with development conditions. I mean, I'm, I'm dealing with at least, I'd say, six or eight really substantial issues right at the moment, at least. And it is really disappointing that, again, the focus is on helping developers and helping builders, not protecting the community from bad development. And I think that that is, that is very disappointing.
Further speakers?
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Excuse me, councillor Adams, please.
I just want to make it clear, I was not disrespecting the hundreds of thousands of people that are tuning in at the moment, it was about the ridiculousness and the petty political play on the former motion that people would come.
Thank you councillor Adams, are there any further speakers on the matter? Any further speakers? Councillor Adams, did you want to respond? I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Public and Active Transport Committee, please.
Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of May 2020, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Owen, the report of the public, an active transport committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021, be adopted, is there any debate? Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Chair, look, I covered off on, in question time today, what I think is a momentous day for our city, the selection of the alignments for two of the five green bridges that Lord Mayor committed to when he first became Lord Mayor, another two in the bag, so to speak, Chair, and we are continuing our great work there, rolling out new green bridges for the people of the city of Brisbane. And it's been fantastic to watch on social media over the last few hours, the excitement build around these new connections, because I think we can all agree that, that green bridges are the transport mode of the future. We are seeing an explosion in e-scooter use and e-bike use. So, I mean, at the start, this might have been about cyclists, even 18 months ago, we were talking about cyclists and pedestrians, now we're talking about a whole new range of transport options that we've only begin, sorry, we've only begun to scratch the surface of. So I'm super excited about what these projects will mean for our city, what they will mean for connecting communities. It's really good to see, and it's great to see Brisbane residents getting excited to and getting right behind them. Just quickly, deputy chair, I gave an update last week about the new e-scooter rollout. I'm pleased to confirm that new e-scooters have been rolled out as part of the cap increase. Already, Neuron have deployed 300 new scooters, Lime have deployed 100 of their 200 scooters with the next 100 to come in the coming days, and then we will be at the full complement of 1,500 scheme scooters throughout the city. The next update is just to say that council has now completed its safer paths to school programme for the 2020/21 financial year. This year's programme constructed approximately 4.6 kilometres of pathways for schools right across the city, so 21 pathway projects on 23 streets were built, including schools in Camp Hill, Taragindi, Red Hill, Oxley, Gibung and Annaly, to name a few. This programme is a continuing demonstration of the Shrinna Council's commitment to better footpath connectivity out in the suburbs and all around the city. Deputy Chair, moving to the report, before us last week, the PAT committee received a presentation on Cycling Brisbane's suite of bike skills workshops. I'm sure all councillors in this place are familiar with council's fantastic Cycling Brisbane programme, which aims to educate the Brisbane community about how to ride and how to make the most of our city's extensive cycling infrastructure. Cycling Brisbane offers a wide range of free workshops, including classes for children, workshops about mountain bike riding, bike maintenance, bike skills for adults, BMX, electric bike tasters, guided rides for seniors and guided rides for people living with a disability. The workshops play a very important role in creating communities that are confident about not only using the bikes themselves, but knowing where to ride and how to get there. And they're run by qualified and experienced trainers who know how to work with cyclists of all skill levels. Last year, almost 1,000 people participated in the workshops, and this shows that there's something for everyone in the variety of workshops on offer, whether you're a beginner or a long-time rider. We know that people who try the workshops love them, with around 90% of participants rating their experience as excellent, and 71% saying they plan to ride more often after their class. There's plenty of these workshops scheduled each year, and I would strongly encourage everyone to jump on council's website and learn more about when they are operating in your communities. Last week, the committee also considered a petition requesting council allow the kitty cat city hopper service to stop at the Mowbray Park ferry terminal. The petition response, deputy chair, explains that city hopper service will not be extended to Mowbray Park terminal at this time. This is because the kitty cats are operating on an interim timetable and an upgrade of Mowbray Park ferry terminal is now planned. Council has allocated additional funding over the next three years to upgrade the terminals, including the Mowbray, Mowbray Park ferry terminal, to improve accessibility for all users and to meet our compliance obligations under the Disability Discrimination Act. The upgraded ferry terminal will increase capacity to cater, cater for future and current patronage demand and improve accessibility for all passengers. In addition to these benefits, the main driver of the upgrade is to continue to roll out improved infrastructure in areas of high growth, high demand, and certainly Mowbray Park and Kangaroo Point has seen that. A DA has been lodged for the upgrade and design is now worked through with construction timeframe still to be confirmed. Council has now reinstated the majority of the ferry services previously serviced by the Monahole ferries, however, we will continue to assess the requirements of the ferry services, including services to Mowbray Park ferry terminal into the future, and I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Murphy, are there any further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, just really quickly on the petition, we talked about this a bit in committee, so I won't rehash the point too much, but it, it would be really, really good to see that free city hopper service eventually extended around to Mowbray Park. I know councillor Murphy says he'll look into this, and I hope that that network review will, and the consultation associated with it will start reasonably soon. There's, some people think of the suburb of East Brisbane and think of sort of the low to medium density workers cottages that proliferate throughout the southern side of the suburb, but that northern end of East Brisbane, particularly around Park Avenue and immediately to the west of Mowbray Park, is quite a dense neighbourhood, there's a very high volume, high number of people living around there, and certainly a lot, lot of demand for public transport services. And I think, given some of the new developments that have been approved in that precinct between Wellington Road and Park Avenue, which is just outside the border of my electorate now, there's a lot of density that's gone in there over the last few years, and a very strong case for, for more public transport to service that particular area. So obviously, the city cat's good for moving a lot of people, but that free city hopper service to give people another option to jump back and forth around to New Farm, Kangaroo Point, Howard Smith Wharves, perhaps. So, obviously, the City Cat's good for moving a lot of people, but that free City Hopper Service to give people another option to jump back and forth around to New Farm, Kangaroo Point, Howard Smith Wharves perhaps, would be really good to see. So, I'm going to continue advocating for that free City Hopper Service to extend around to East Brisbane, and I hope the council administration looks quite seriously at that. I'll, I'll be interested to see how, how the consultation on the network goes, and I hope that the council cast a very broad net in seeking feedback on that.
Any further speakers? Councillor Murphy? Will now put the motion, all those in favour say aye. Against? The ayes have it. Councillor McLaughlin, the Infrastructure Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Maddick, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee dated Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Previous presentations about cycling initiatives, the presentation we had in our committee last week, item A, was about motorcycling initiatives, but they both piece in the same pot, if you like, and that is to how people move around this city, but we are concerned about how people move around on motorcycles, and that was the purpose of the presentation last week, to look at what is happening with motorcycling use in our city, where, where the significant number of registrations are, and how people using motorcycles are moving around on our roads. And the, the plan through, the transport plan for Brisbane is to look at how we accommodate our road network and how we deal with issues that are arising. So, looking at motorcycle parking in the city, the crash data that arises from motorcycles, which is regrettably too high, and we need to work with the Queensland Police Service in that regard, engagement with motorcyclists to gain insight into issues arising, what are the obstacles to their experience in the city, which is quite often other vehicle users. So we all need to be more aware on the roads of motorcyclists, but we do have a, a plan to deal with the issues arising, to develop a strategy document and a supporting action plan to summarise motorcycle-related initiatives and to guide future road management practices. So that was the purpose of the, the presentation last week, which I think was informative to all members of the committee. The other item before us was a petition, it was a request to install pedestrian refuges on Douglas Street and Englefield Road in Oxley, which is supported by the council officers, subject to funding for investigation and then further community consultation.
Thank you councillor McLaughlin. Are there any further speakers? Being nobody to their feet, no? Will now put the motion, all those in favour say aye. Against? The ayes have it. Councillor Davis.
Thank you Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you Deputy Chair. The Shriner Council team is continuing to focus on building a better Brisbane. Last week's committee presentation was on the progress of our major district's sports park projects, namely Wally Tate Park in Runcorn and the Nudji Recreation Reserve in Nudji. Wally Tate Park is a well-used green space, and stage two of this project is well underway. Construction works on the new public amenities building have progressed, and this new facility is just one of the many upgrades which this project will deliver, including a new clubhouse, new footpaths, car parks, cricket nets and much more. By investing in these upgrades, we will ensure that Wally Tate Park can be even better enjoyed by local families, residents and sport and recreation clubs, who are staying active and healthy and getting out and about. At Nudji Recreation Reserve, the remediation of this former landfill site will mean that this space will once again be at the heart of sporting life in the north-eastern suburbs by providing a space for sports such as cricket, touch football and soccer. This will be complemented by a BMX track, lighting to improve night time visibility, ample car parking, a new clubhouse, playground shelter, barbecue and picnic area and a dog off-leash area. These upgrades cater not only for sports groups, but also for the wider community through building new space for unstructured recreation. It is also important to note that both of these major sports parks are being built in close proximity to train stations, meaning it will be easy for residents across the city to access these facilities. This administration continues to invest in outdoor spaces to create more to see and do in our suburbs, so communities across our city can enjoy our great outdoor Brisbane lifestyle. Deputy Chair, the committee also considered five submissions. This included two formal park namings and three petitions. The first petition is in relation to off-road cycling facilities and two petitions relating to access for dogs at Nudji Beach. Councillor Cunningham has spoken in the chamber previously about our foreshore dog off-leash area trial and the decision made at Nudji Beach, so I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor, is there any further debate? Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to, on item A regarding the committee presentation, in particular regarding the Wally Tate Park redevelopment that is happening presently as we speak. Well, they've probably finished work for the day, but they'll be back out there again tomorrow morning. Look, I just wanted to mention, this is kind of an example of what the Algep delivers. So councillor Adams talked about this earlier on in her presentation about Algep and what it's there for and how it works. And yes, it does take time, and yes, it does take a lot of money, but as we've heard, we need to ensure that we get it right, and we get it right every time and the first time. There was lots of community consultation on this particular plan. We came out with one particular idea, and then the community just said they had their feedback, they didn't like some of the ideas, so we took it back to the drawing board, so to speak, which is what community consultation's all about. I think we've come up with a good plan now. I do want to set the record straight, though. I know that there was mention here in the chamber in September last year when this was first brought forward, about that we were spending $9 million for construction of a lure coursing, and obviously, a lot of people don't actually know what the Lure Coursing Association is. But look, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that that is not the case. If you look at the presentation, which is on your documents there, it will see what a substantial amount of work is being undertaken, not least of which cricket. The cricket club at that way are gaining an extra junior field, as well as a complete redevelopment of their senior field. There's the mosque there, which as you can imagine, has a lot of people attending most weeks, and in particular on a Friday. We have an Alsuraj Association, we have the Korean Association, we have a very popular Dola at that way, a multi-use court, outdoor gym, and of course, then the lure coursing come in and have a sublease on that space as well. So it's a very well-used place in my ward. Some of the, a fair whack of the money is going into the entry. At the moment, it's just a one lane, which is kind of hidden, so it doesn't have great set ted. So we're spending a lot of money on a new way, roadway, two-way, in and out, as well as parking facilities. So when they all finish in this space, it's going to be another well-loved community facility for everybody, not just the Runcorn Ward. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. I rise to speak briefly in regards to the formal naming of the Matthew Conwell Sports Fields. I have spoken previously in this place about the importance, not only that Matt played to the sport of cricket and football, but also to many, many clubs right across the city of Brisbane, and I formally support and endorse this formal naming, and I commend it to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Is there any further debate? There being none, councillor Davis, reply? No? Will now put the report, all those in favour say aye. Against? The ayes have it. We will now move on to community standards, commu-, oh, sorry, I'm going to start again. Thank you councillor Marks. City Standards and Community Health and Safety Committee Report, please, councillor Marks.
My apologies. I was wondering why councillor Mackay was giving me the aye. Now I know.
I think you're the only person who's gotten that so far.
I was focusing on other things and then completely forgot my own stuff. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Landis, that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted. Councillor Marks, is there anything you would like to share with us?
I'd love to share with the, I'd love to share with the chamber about the presentation that we had last week, which was on the Chevy, the 19, the 1939 Chevy, that, God, am I right, eight officers out there at Fleet spent more than 1,700 hours of their own time renovating and bringing back to life. It was an amazing work of love. What I, what I was told apparently, that the photographer had a great deal of difficulty getting a decent photo of the truck, because the paint was so shiny, he actually had to Photoshop himself out of the paint of the photo image, so I thought that was quite hilarious. We had done some media down there in King George Square that, the previous day about the truck, it attracted a lot of attention. We had passersby coming through, stopping and looking, particularly when it was turned on and the horn was beeped a couple of times, and I got to sit in the truck, it was super exciting. We will be looking at doing something with this truck in that places like the Greenheart Fair and truck shows and stuff like that, and people who are interested in having this truck attend any of their community events, we'll be looking at trying to organise that for people, so everyone can just see what a work, I love that this was done. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Will now put the report, all those in favour say aye. Against? The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, would you like to share something?
Well, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landis, that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted. Councillor Howard, you have the call.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. So before moving to the report, I think it's very important for me to say that today I met with the River City Pride from Brisbane City Council, and we had a fantastic forum about Idah Hobbit Day, which is International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, Intersexism and Transphobia. And I was delighted yesterday morning to raise the rainbow flag from City Hall to recognise Idah Hobbit. It's 31 years ago on, on May 17, 1990, that the World Health Organisation removed homosexuality from the classification of diseases and related health problems. This important milestone marks a day of significance for many in the community, but there is still work to be done. Through you, Mr Chair, I would just like to thank River City Pride for the work that they do within Brisbane City Council. And one of the important things that we talked about today was the fact that Idah Hobbit Day is actually every day of the year, and that all of us should be working against discrimination in any manner formal way, and I think that that's a, a great goal for us to, to meet. It's also important for us to look at what we mean to be doing going forward, and, and that, you know, if each day we think of one more thing that we can do just to make people feel more included in this wonderful city, we know that this city has a great reputation for being inclusive and also for being friendly, and I think it's days like Idah Hobbit Day that just raise that awareness within the community, and I really like to commend the River City group for the work that they do. I'd also like to let people know that it is Library and Information Week from the 17th to the 23rd of May, and that's to focus on the important role libraries play in the community. So Australian Library and Information Association is, runs the event, and this year's theme is Adventures in Space and Time. So it's wonderful to get along to your library, particularly this week, to hear more about that. And moving to the report, last week we had a, a presentation on the Home Library Service, and I know that Lord Mayor Adrian Shriner was able to deliver books to a wonderful lady who had turned 100 and so appreciates the work that this Home Library Service does. So in closing, I'd just like to thank everybody within Brisbane City Council for the work they do, not only in River City Pride, but also in our libraries and right across the city, and enjoy Library Week, and I commend it to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Howard, I will now put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang, and the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 11th of May 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. In last week's committee meeting, we had a presentation on Better Brisbane Proposals and how we are supporting local business. A Better Brisbane Proposal is an idea that can solve a Brisbane problem, address an opportunity for Brisbane, enhance services that council provides and contributes to the Brisbane Vision 2031. Council must consider if the outcome is fair to the supply market, the proposal is advantageous to Brisbane, value for money can be demonstrated and substantiated. Key principles of a Better Brisbane Proposal include no wrong door, which basically means it can come into council through any channel. There's a call-first policy, so that potential applicants call council and just get a sense as to whether their proposal will have at least the, the substance behind it to, to get to the application stage. If applications are received, we have a, a fast fail mechanism, or alternatively, are we missing someone there?
Yeah, is everything okay? Okay, you all right? Good, okay. Just making, just making sure, sorry. Excuse me. Please, please proceed.
So whether the, the application fails quickly or alternatively moves forward towards some sort of validation, improved engagement through innovation pathways and connecting the right people to consider proposals. Since the launch of the new process, there have been 49 proposals and inquiries with 38 fast fails within two to 10 days. Better Brisbane Proposals support businesses by offering monthly Meet the Procurement Team drop-in sessions at the Brisbane and Nunda Business Hubs, and these are commencing in May 2021, holding supplier forums at the Brisbane Business Hub, and these will be in August and October this year, and it allows suppliers to register on council's website through the Selling to Council platform. Better Brisbane Proposals webinars are due on the 24th of June, and we'll be holding additional webinars through the year. The Better Brisbane Proposals can also be lodged through Brisbane's website, and that's the preferred mechanism, and there's obviously an online submission form there. In the committee meeting, we also had a regular committee report, the Bank and Investment Report for March 2021, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Allen. I now put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have a petition here by a number of residents in 25, 20, well, sorry, in Belmont Place Forest Lake, asking for a tree to be removed for safety concerns.
Any other petitions? May I please have a resolution to receive them?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Strunk, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. Is there any, all those in favour, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business, are there any statements required as a result of an office of the independent assessor or councillor, councillor ethics committee order? There isn't? Isn't, is there any other matters of ordinary general business? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. It has just been over 12 months since my election to the general reward, and as a country, we have faced some enormous challenges, the COVID pandemic and a huge economic shock. It has been a difficult road, but together, we've managed to achieve so much. And what I love about our level of government is the ability to make tangible change, the ability to fill a pothole, plant a tree, improve our suburbs and connect our community. There is nothing more satisfying than building a better Brisbane, and it has been an absolute honour to serve my community as part of the Shriner administration. Our vision to build a better Brisbane, our, our vision is to build a better Brisbane, and I have continued to improve our suburbs this year by upgrading the Ginderley Boat Ramp Park for our ferry friends, installing a new toilet facility at Lower Keet Park and shortly in Phildemon Park, building the River Hills pontoon, enhancing the Darra Pump Track with a new handball court, barbecue- building the River Hills pontoon, enhancing the Dara Pump Track with a new handball court, barbecue facility and shelter, upgrading the playground and gym equipment at Carroll Park Community Park, enhancing the local shopping precinct at Dara and Ellen Grove, and the list goes on. I would like to highlight one special project at the Centenary Memorial Gardens. This simple footpath through the park and tiered seating enabled our servicemen and women on Anzac Day to march through a guard of honour to the ceremony. To say it simply, the RSL were chuffed with the upgrade, as were the two thousand locals who attended this important service. While these upgrades and enhancements are important, I haven't forgotten about the basics. With over two kilometres of footpaths installed, sixteen roads resurfaced and over eight hundred trees planted. I am passionate about greening our suburbs and in River Hills, I have just planted an arbor of trees in the median strip along Summoner's Road. An arbor that will transform this suburb, and I look forward to doing the same across the ward. In the past twelve months, I've worked closely with various bush care and environmental advocacy groups who do an exceptional job of protecting and enhancing habitat and biodiversity in our local reserves. In collaboration with the Men's Shed and the Centenary District Environment Advocacy Group, we will soon be installing twenty-five bird boxes in Lower Keet Park. This is one of many partnerships I have established and will continue to encourage in our community. The sign of a strong and healthy city is one with a big heart. Locally, that big heart is found in the Centenary Men's Shed, the Rotary Clubs, the Centenary Stormers, the Ginderley Jags, the Bush Care Groups, the Ginderley Bowls Club, literally every sporting club and community group across our suburbs. Many of these during COVID were struggling to survive. Together with the Lord Mayor, through the COVID grants and through the community fund, we ensured the heart of our community kept ticking. These grant recipients have been so grateful for the investment from our Schrinner council. And I'm so proud to continue to support these important organisations. Finally, I want to thank my colleagues. As a new councillor, I've been grateful for your advice, support and words of wisdom in navigating this new role. We will continue to work together to make our city an amazing place to live, work and play.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair, Mr Acting Chair. I realise the condolence motion was earlier, but I've also got some words about Ian Brusasco. And I'd met Ian a few times and thought I knew a fair bit about his history. But I've looked at it, I've listened to an interview by Lindsay Marshall and Malcolm McMillan as part of an oral history project. And they interviewed Ian and his wife, to some extent Patsy. And the project, the interviews took place on the twenty-sixth of April and the second of May back in two thousand and ten. Ian has died at ninety-two and in a lot of areas, he was quite a legendary figure in various areas of his life. His mother and father arrived in Australia as Italian migrants. His father initially cut cane in Ingham when he and his brother were born. Sadly, his father got quite ill and he had to come to hospital in Brisbane and was in hospital for three years in hospital. And during that time, their mother received what the equivalent of the modern disability support pension. And except those days, it was thirty shillings a week. And from that, she obviously had to feed and clothe herself and her two children, Ian and his brother, who were at that stage nine and ten years of age. Ian estimated about half the money that she received each week went out in rent. So they were actually very, very poorly off. And he remembered that his whole life. He never forgot how poor he was. And if anyone called him a silver tail, he would give them a serve back and point out that his background, that he was quite poor. And it was only his pharmacy career that he and Patsy, who was also a pharmacist, made them money, sort of thing. Ian ran and operated some of the most profitable pharmacies in Brisbane. The one in the mall was a very profitable pharmacist and he bought and sold a number of pharmacies as well. He got to the stage where he employed skillful and trustworthy managers of pharmacies. They did all the work of running the pharmacies and he just needed to, he did not need to get involved personally himself. One of his many famous people, I guess he met through this, through his football connections, football being soccer, was Frank Lowey. And this was many years ago. And Frank offered to sell him, Frank was interested in getting capital for his new business, later called Westfield. And he offered to sell Ian a thousand shares in Westfield. And then Ian didn't know Frank that well at the time, so he knocked the offer back. He thought afterwards they're probably worth about X million dollars by this day. He married Patsy in nineteen fifty-six when he was twenty-eight years old. He was heavily involved in soccer though, he never played himself. You know, of course soccer in Australia has relied heavily on people migrating from other countries with their great love of the game. But they also as players as well and their kids playing. His, Ian's son Mark was a good player. He played thirty games of National League, he played A-grade in Brisbane for many years. And he's now deputy principal at Brisbane Grammar. So, but in the early days when Ian was involved, there was a bit of a division between the people who are still largely migrants but are from British backgrounds and also the European background teams that had been established in Brisbane. And they weren't playing the same competition. So that was one of the things that Ian did early on is get them together. And they established the Queensland Soccer Federation where they all played in the one comp. The other thing that he did as an official with the Azuri Club, Azuri being the blue colour that the Italian national team wear, they actually started offering good players. He said to his coach, what do we need to win a premiership? And the coach said, well, we need, and named three or four players who are all playing with Ipswich Club. Ipswich at that stage was a very famous club that had half the Australian team in it back in the fifties. But, so, and then Ian said, well, he went and saw one of the players and they said, oh, you know, ten pound to win and I'll come and play for you. And so he signed up the four players that the coach wanted. And then the Azuri Brisbane City, as it later became, was, started to be its role as a powerhouse of Brisbane soccer. But then, of course, the other teams weren't silly either. So Hellenic, which were the Greek team in Brisbane, they started doing the same and signing up players as well. So in a way, it was good for soccer players in Brisbane because they're getting a bit of payment and good luck to them. And of course, the games between Hellenic and Azuri were massive games where you'd get ten thousand in a crowd to watch a club soccer game in Brisbane. So that was what, and Ian first got involved because his dad had gone down to the Azuri Club and come home and said, oh, I'm president of the Azuri Club now, I'm president of the soccer club. And Ian said, well, that'd be good for you, Dad, they'll give you a good interest. And he said, yeah, he said, but they haven't got a, they didn't have a secretary nominate for the position, so you're the secretary. And Ian said, oh, thanks, Dad, you know, better things I could have done than that. But anyhow, so that's how Ian got involved. He was involved for many, many years. And I can recall when he became president of the Australian Soccer Federation. He was always the Queensland delegate for the, in the ASF, but he became president. And then the Southerners didn't like someone from Queensland taking such an important position. So they managed to dump him after a couple of years, which everyone in Queensland was disgusted with. But anyhow, but he also, he went on as a person in charge of trips by the Australian soccer team. And one of the most famous ones he went on was in nineteen sixty-five when Australia had to play a World Cup qualifier against North Korea. And you'd think, oh, well, North Korea mightn't be a great team or anything like that. But apparently they played thirty-five internationals in three years. And Australia weren't very well prepared. And North Korea beat Australia six-one in the first leg and three-one in the second leg, which was a flogging. And so North Korea went through to the finals of the World Cup held in England. And they were a famous team at the time. They actually made it to the quarterfinals, which is the best an Asian team had ever achieved. And they were actually up three-nil in the quarter final against, this is nothing to do with councillor, is it? But I'm going to keep talking. They were up, they were up three-nil against the famous Portuguese team. And in the first twenty-seven minutes, the Portuguese got two back before half-time. And their most famous player, Eusebio, got another two early in the second half. So it was four to Eusebio. And then another Portuguese player scored, so they end up winning five-three against North Korea. But North Korea did incredibly well. The Australians then, having lost these qualifying games, went and played some friendly games in, guess what country? Well, yes, it was in Vietnam. They played a few games in Vietnam before they went home. And this is in the middle of the Vietnam War. So anyhow, so that was, that was that one. But that was a very famous trip that Ian was in charge of the Australian team, you know, in charge of the arrangements. And also he was part of Clem Jones's Brisbane strikers team, which won a premiership in the NSL back in nineteen ninety-seven. Ian's political career had its ups and downs. And I think that's credit to him that he was prepared to run, get beaten and, you know, and a couple of years later say, no, I'll give it another go, I'll give it another go. And so he was unsuccessful a couple of occasions at state level. But then he got fourteen years in council. So he, he did achieve a lot as chair of the Health and Planning Committees. And on another occasion, he only agreed to run because he was promised a position as a chair in the event that Labour was successful, or Labour were successful and the promise evaporated. So there's, politics hasn't changed a lot over the years. So Ian was in charge of the Labour Party's assets. And this is, and he did a brilliant job in looking after Labour Party's assets. Now, Labour Party at that time, when he got involved, owned 4KQ, which was a radio station. You might say, what on earth would, what use was a radio station to a political party? Well, they, 4KQ were doing it tough and Ian feared for its future. In fact, he thought they might go broke. At one stage, they were so close to going broke that they used to send the payroll figures over to Clem Jones and Clem would arrange payment of the staff, otherwise the staff wouldn't have got paid. But, so that couldn't continue indefinitely. So Ian got a fellow called Ian Skippen, who was quite a famous person in radio in Brisbane, to help him run 4KQ. And they decided to have what they called crossover country music. And, because all the other stations had their own part of the market that they were marketing to. And the ratings picked up and Ian decided that that was good. But it was such a volatile industry that continuing to have that as the major asset of the Labour Party wasn't very smart, which was very smart of him. And then, so a group came down from down south called Wesco. They offered ten million dollars in cash and six million dollars in their shares, six million shares at a dollar each. And Ian couldn't believe his luck. And so in the end, so the Labour Party sold it. Later on, not far after that, the share market was booming, but Ian could sense that it was coming to the end of the, end of its bull run. And he sold the shares that had been originally given to them at a dollar each for a dollar twenty-eight. So that wasn't bad, times six million. And then he watched as Wesco's price dropped to a dollar, then eighty cents, sixty cents, forty cents. And finally, they went off the board altogether. So they went broke basically in the nineteen eighty-seven crash. So anyhow, after the crash, Ian received good advice and started buying shares for the party, like Westpac Bank, at about two dollars fifty. You know, that was the time everyone thought Westpac could go broke. And so they'd been worth a lot more than that and they were down to that. And he bought many shares for the Labour Party anyhow, some property as well. But his investments meant that the Labour Party in Queensland, I think, were the wealthiest Labour Party in Australia and probably one of the wealthiest of any parties. I don't know, someone here might know the Liberal Party's finances, whether they've got millions and millions of dollars of assets. But, yeah.
Councillor Cumming. Sorry? I think we might have to call it, mate.
Oh, I'm just moving, Stenchon? Yeah, you want to like a Stenchon?
I would, I would.
No, no, just, I'm nearly finished, I'm nearly finished, sorry.
Mr Deputy Chair, can I move an extension of?
There's no extensions in general. Councillors, there's no extensions in general business.
I can speak again though, can I? I can.
You can, yes.
Yeah, righty. Okay, thank you. I'd like to speak on Ian Brusasco, Mr Chairman. It'll be, it'll be quick, it'll be quick, yeah. Anyhow, so anyhow, they asked, in part of the interview, they asked Ian what he thought of being in opposition when Sally Anne got in. And he said, well, it allowed him to make plenty of attacking speeches because that's, you could do that in opposition and you couldn't do it in administration. So he quite enjoyed that, he said. And Sally Anne, Sally Anne was impressed by his speaking abilities. She said, at least when he had a go at her, it was a classy act that was having a go at her, having a go at her, sort of thing. Ian was very proud of his involvement in Food Bank, which I think we heard earlier today. He was part of that from the outset. And a lot of these projects he was involved in, he worked closely with Clem Jones, who was a great friend of his. So Ian Brusasco, what a life, childhood poverty, a pharmacy giant, a football reformer, a political career ups and downs, a brilliant investor in ALP funds and Food Bank. Vale, the late, great Ian Brusasco.
Well said, councillor Cumming. Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Councillor Marks.
Sorry, Matt, oh really? Sorry. Sorry.
I think it's time to go home, Mr Deputy Chair.
Haven't forgiven councillor Marks for early.
I think she's, she's much prettier than I am, Mr Chairman. And wears better shoes, much, and has a larger array of shoes than I've ever had, Mr Chairman.
Is that what we're talking about in GB?
No, Mr Chairman, I'd like to rise and speak on the last twelve months. But before that, I really do have to acknowledge the speech by councillor Cummings. There was a lot in it and the overview that he gave of Ian Brusasco's life was quite thorough. And your deep understanding of soccer is quite amazing. You should actually write a book on it, councillor. But credit to you for covering Ian Brusasco's life so, so fully. Because he did have a long time in this place, but his contribution to community was quite significant. And speeches were made earlier on, but what you've given us is a far more detailed overview of one man's commitment to council and to his community. So well done for that. I would actually be interested in your comments around the sale of 4KQ and whether that was actually the beginnings of what then became Labour Holdings. It was Labour Holdings because I remember my father used to work at Billy Mars Seafood Restaurant, which was just in front, near 4KQ there. And when golf used to come in and he'd have lunch there and then he'd go back to 4KQ. And I remember that a lot of the Labour Party meetings were used to be held around the 4KQ studio. So the background of that, and we're talking like nineteen seventy-two, seventy-three, that's really interesting to know. Now, on a, well, almost as interesting topic. And that's on a more serious note, the last twelve months in Paddington Ward. And we're coming close to the end of the financial year and I thought it was an important time to be able to speak to the chamber about the work that we've been doing in the ward. As councillor Hutton correctly said, COVID had an enormous impact on our communities in so many ways last year, but particularly around our community clubs and the events that we would normally attend and support. And that was quite surreal. Thankfully, the Lord Mayor's vision and the work that councillor Howard did in all of those vital grants for COVID support were absolutely fundamental to keeping our clubs afloat. And I, like many other councillors in here, saw them go through significant impacts. And if they didn't have that money to just keep the lights on, a lot of them would have closed down. And that was absolutely an unacceptable outcome. So thank you to councillor Howard and the Lord Mayor for having that foresight and vision to be able to do that. For myself, just like other councillors, eventually as COVID started to ease, we started to see a number of community events come back to the fore. And I really want to acknowledge the tremendous effort of Milton State School for what is normally called Fair on the Green. They had to vary it, of course, and undertake quite a significant COVID safe plan. It was surreal what they had to do in order to bring that event on and simply for the purposes of fundraising for the students. So I was very pleased to be able to attend that event, represent the Lord Mayor and provide the necessary financial support as we do to help them offset the costs for that event so that more money. so that more money could be contributed to the things that really matter, which is supporting the school kids. We, of course, then, as a community up on Latrow and Given Terrace, brought forward our annual Christmas stall event. It's a street festival that we have up on the terrace. This is our third year, it was our third year of being able to run it. It was really interesting. In previous years, we get an enormous amount of people coming. We promote it quite widely. It's become more of a citywide event and we get a lot of people from different suburbs coming to enjoy it. But when we had it in Christmas just passed, because of Covid, we were under the restraint of not being able to advertise the event. And so we had a, a street festival without actually being able to promote it as a street festival. So that was an interesting turn. But we did, through just the regularity of the event and just by sharing it around the people in the ordinary course, still have a significant event for the terrace. And that was such an important event for the community because all of those traders up there took a significant hit, had to alter their businesses into ways that they had never thought of going into social media and online, which was for them previously just a thought, but then became a reality. Having people actually come up to the street, walk into their shops, buy all the different things that they wanted to for Christmas and all those unique shopping experience, but also the food experience was such a great shot in the arm for the community. And I was so pleased again, from a councillor's perspective, and having council support that event. We were very lucky to have news branch come on board and, and provide a sustainability markets element to it as they do with the Greenheart Fairs. And that added an extra level to the event. And so we were, had sustainable markets on top of the local traders running their stalls. So that was, that was so important for the local community. Now, as, as we get through the year, you know, we've got those big items, but of course, like all councillors, we have to focus on the day-to-day because the small things are just as important as the large. And so our office was run off their feet as, as most officers are with this change in work practices now with more people working from home, there's more and more work that's coming in through the office because people are seeing more of the things in their local communities that they would not normally see at work. And that's provided us with a real opportunity to engage quite broadly with the community, to deal with all those day-to-day issues. And importantly also, to target some of the things that are important to them. Councillor Sri spoke before about the necessity of greening our suburbs. I'm really pleased to be able to say that the Lord Mayor invested money in, in last year's budget towards a greening suburbs programme. And we were able to roll out a, a tree planting programme for Paddington and Barden, which saw great results. And we had a rolling programme in this financial year that now, that incorporated Red Hill, Milton and Kelvin Grove. And through that extra planning programme, we had community street planning. And we saw, we've seen up to upwards of three hundred brand-new street trees being planted within those suburbs. And having that kind of greenery in the inner city is absolutely fundamental. Council does a lot within this space about, you know, the science behind the heat maps that it produces in conjunction with Syro and using that as a template for where that planning takes place. A lot of background work goes into that and having that tree planting programme there is absolutely vital. Of course, as we do that, we're also rolling out the usual kind of projects. We're upgrading toilet blocks down at Gregory Park. It's a great little local park at Rosely Village, utilised by Milton State School and the community as a whole. The toilets hadn't been upgraded there for quite a while. We've just recently seen that upgrade go through. We're working at the moment on a brand-new plan to upgrade the playground at Gregory Park. We've also seen upgrades to dog-off-leash areas near Fulcher Park, near where the Broncos are. We've seen upgrades to other playgrounds within the wards. We're working on rolling out even more footpath upgrades within the ward. And importantly also, working towards improvements in local communities' assets. One of the big passions for me, Mr Deputy Chair, is the arts. And being able to support our local artists and the creative soul of our city is fundamental, particularly in suburbs like, and wards like mine, like Paddington Ward. What I was able to provide funding through, through our Lord Mayor Suburban Initiative Fund was an art festival over a weekend in the middle of the year that was supporting local artists who produce temporary works. Those temporary works were then displayed within the local shops over a two-week period. And we also created an art trail for people to be able to utilise online. Again, we had the challenge of promotion, but through social media, we were able to get a really great outcome for the local community. But what it, what it actually did was brought the traders and the creative community together. And some of those traders actually took, took the opportunity then to purchase that, that public artwork. And for some of them, it now sits within their shops. And so having that creative element of what we're doing is so fundamental. And the work that councillor Howard is doing in that space is key to the heart of our city and supporting the arts. And what she spoke about earlier and all of the grants and all the support the council provides is absolutely fundamental. And I want to acknowledge the Lord Mayor for continuing to so strongly support that suburban initiative fund and give us the opportunities. And of course, now that in, in the new year, we've seen the rise of festivals and events again within the ward. So for me, it's been a chock-a-block year of being able to green our suburbs, bring the community together through business, reinstate those key community activities and continue to support the arts as we move forward. And as we had today in regards to the digital signage laws, bring new changes to our community that will see greater improvements and protection of our character and heritage and improve the amenity of our local community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Matt. Further items? Councillor Strunk?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. And let me first also acknowledge councillor Cummings' history lesson. I think it actually rivaled my old American history teacher, Mr Coulson. And he was, he was quite incredible in telling a story and turning a phrase. And certainly councillor Cunningham has done that. Cummins has done that, sorry? No, no, not at all, not at all. Thank you, thank you for that correction. I also want to rise and speak to a couple of, an event and a couple of special days that are coming up in my ward. The first, the first event is this coming Saturday. And that's the Bangladeshi New Year's Celebration for twenty twenty-one, which is undertaken by the Bangladesh Association of Brisbane. Now, of course, it's been very challenging with Covid to, to pull together an event to celebrate a, a New Year's, a New Year's, celebrate the New Year's for the organisation and the community. This organisation, who is facilitating it, has been, I think it was established about twenty-nine years ago, nineteen ninety-two, if my math is correct. And at present, they have seven thousand members, strong, with fifteen hundred that are financial, living here in Queensland. I did know this up until maybe twelve, eighteen months ago, that I have a fairly sizable Bangladeshi group in my, in my ward, residents in my ward. And Dr JD has been sort of teaching me in regards to the Bangladeshi community and Bangladesh itself and how it came about through its history, which they, they really struggled, of course, to establish their independence. And, and I want to thank the Lord Mayor and the administration for actually, on the twenty-sixth of March, they flew the flag just out here, as well as on the twenty-second of March, for the Independence Day, that they, they, the bridges were lit up in their national colours. The event will be a celebration of the food, of course, the colour and friendship and multiculturalism, because they're very much wanting to celebrate what Australia is all about, where it has become a very multicultural country. The multicultural, they'll have a, a number of stalls, of course, set up. There'll be a full multicultural programme, including performances by children and local, and local talents and celebrities in Queensland and, and from interstate. This event will potentially attract more than three thousand attendees, even with, even with still the, still current restrictions even for outdoors. And people also from South Asian community come along and, and help celebrate. Sadly, it's, it's taking place up in Springfield, which I was a bit sad about. I think we have some good venues here in Brisbane. But I suppose it's all about the Covid and then trying to deal with those numbers that will, that will attend. It's, as you say, it's on a Saturday from four till, four till six PM. That's the sort of the official stuff, but it will sort of go pretty much for the majority of the day. In regards to a couple of special days coming up, the National Dog Rescue, Rescue Day is, is happening on the twentieth of this week or this month. It was founded by Lisa, and I'm probably going to mispronounce the surname, Weblink, who was running Tales That, Tales That Teach, which was an awareness, it was, it was, it was an awareness of, of, I suppose, the plight of the rescue dog or the dogs that are actually in the shelters that are, that are looking for a home. And of course, it, well, it used to be in the ward of Richlands, but the, the RSPCA at Wecole, of course, has many dogs that are up for, for adoption that are rescue dogs. And so I just encourage anyone who would like to have a, a new best friend, have a look at one of the, one of the centres that are able to, that you're able to purchase a dog from, with everything that, that comes with those dogs, with all the shots and the spathing and all that. Also fostering, of course, dogs is something that a number of my friends have actually done as well, which, which I suppose sometimes is a pathway to full adoption. But it also relieves the pressure on the, on the RSPCA in regards to having to house the dogs all there at Wecole. Also, of course, there are volunteers. If you just want to volunteer, don't want to adopt a dog or foster a dog, they're certainly always looking for help at the shelter. And also there's many jobs, of course, volunteers can do to help, to help, to help that along as well. So, and finally, I didn't, I, I was probably aware that there was, that it was going to be Volunteers' Week. The Lord Mayor mentioned that in his opening remarks. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the volunteers in my, in my ward that do so much for, well, for no pay, of course, but just for the, for the odd thank you, for the people that they, they sort of help. And this year, we're also, we are going to hold the Queensland Day Awards, which we couldn't do last year. This is a programme that was undertaken by Anna Seche Palichay and Milton Dick as councillor, starting back in two thousand and eight. There's been many hundreds of volunteers that have been given a Queensland Day Award. And I just look forward to, again, thanking those volunteers that have been doing some tremendous work under tremendous restrictions for the last twelve, eighteen months and which I'm sure, of course, those volunteers have been doing in the wards right around Brisbane. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Are there any further items of general business? Can I please remind councillors to make sure that they've signed the attendance book? And as nobody else is rising, I declare the meeting closed.